Welcome. Good evening. All right, at this moment, I'd like to call the meeting of the Hamilton Wenham Regional School Committee to order at 7:02 on Thursday, June 16th, 2022. And I'd like to begin by inviting you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Anna?
The Hamilton Wenham Regional School District would like to acknowledge the Massachusetts Tribe, the tribe of indigenous peoples from whom the colony, province, and Commonwealth of Massachusetts have taken their name. We would like to pay our respect to the ancestral bloodline of the Massachusetts Tribe and their descendants who still inhabit historical Massachusetts Tribe territories to this day.
Thank you. Next up, we are going to have an opportunity for citizens' comments. Oh, and I should say before we get started that this meeting is being recorded, and it's also being livestreamed on HW Cam. Citizens' comments are an opportunity for citizens to speak and for us as the school committee to listen. And this evening, we are going to offer citizens' comments from anyone in the room and also if there's anyone on Zoom. Eric, do we have people that are on Zoom?
We do.
Okay. If you do choose to make a comment, I ask you to keep it to three minutes. Also, if you choose to make a comment, I ask you to make sure to spell your name, state your name, spell your name, and let us know your address so we can have that accurate for the minutes. Okay, I'm going to start in the room. I don't know if there's anyone who has a comment in the room. Suspected not. Okay. Do we have anyone on Zoom who would like to make a comment?
Anyone on Zoom who would like to make a comment, please use the raise your hand feature.
Okay. Looks like no. Okay. At this moment, we will close the Zoom link, and those people on Zoom can continue to watch on HW Cam.
We'll be closing the Zoom link. You can move over to HW Cam on the YouTube channel to watch the meeting live. Thank you.
Okay. And next, on our first order of new business is going to be to recognize our retiring staff. And I'm going to turn over to Superintendent Tracy.
Thank you very much. Yesterday, at the staff faculty reception at the high school, we had a little ice cream social, and we recognized our retirees there. We wanted to also bring them here from the school committee publicly. I think it's important to be sure people know who's retiring and all that they've done for our district through the years. And tonight with us, we have some retirees and some supporting staff in the back and family. And then principals will each present the retirees with a little bio. We do have, we gave some of our retirees who were with us yesterday their gifts already. So the people who weren't with us yesterday will get one this evening. And if we can start off, Mr. Shurston, do you want to start off?
Come on up. Becky started her, this is Becky Olivera. Becky started her teaching career in Ottawa, Kansas, as a second-grade teacher in 1985. In 1988, she moved to Newington, Connecticut, and the following year joined us, the Hamilton Wenham family. She spent her first 10 years at Cutler, teaching a year at third grade and nine years at first grade. In 1999, she came to Beaker when it opened as an elementary school, and she spent the last 23 years teaching first and second grade here. Throughout her career, she prioritized strong relationships with students and families. There was never any doubt that she cared for her students as if they were her own children. As if leading by example, Becky never stopped learning. Even through the final months of her career, she was collaborating with colleagues to learn new skills so that she could offer new opportunities to her students. Throughout her career, Becky was always willing to lend a hand and help out her school family. That kindness was reciprocated when Becky was called for what was supposed to be a few days of jury duty in 2018, then a couple more, and then a couple more, and then a couple more days. In all, that ended up being 23 days, and everyone was more than happy to pitch in to help out a friend. Becky truly has a career to be proud of. She's had approximately 750 students move through her classrooms, a year I know they will all look back fondly on. In her retirement, she is looking forward to knitting, biking, water aerobics, her book club, and doing some part-time volunteer work. We wish her the best.
All right, Carolyn Chidiak.
Mrs. Chidiak, oh, I just want to make, can you put the mic so we can, yeah, there we go.
I'm sure. This evening, I have the privilege of thanking Missy Anderechek for her dedicated service to the students and families of Winthrop School. And on behalf of the Winthrop staff, again, we thank you for your friendship and your support during your years at Winthrop. Missy Anderechek has been a strong advocate for developmentally appropriate early childhood education throughout her career. The Hamilton Wenham School District was fortunate to hire Missy in 2005 as a kindergarten teacher, bringing more than 15 years of teaching experience to her new position. In 2011, Missy moved to first grade, where she spent the next 10 years bringing a love of learning to Winthrop's six- and seven-year-olds. Missy created a caring, structured, and predictable learning environment that sparked academic, social, and emotional growth for every student, and each one is lucky to have had Missy Anderechek as their teacher. The start of the new school year won't feel the same without Missy, but we will be happy knowing that she is traveling and knitting and gardening and enjoying a stress-free first day of school. We know she will be back to visit us, and we look forward to hearing about her latest hobbies or adventures.
Rebecca Butler.
Okay, I'm really happy to be here speaking on behalf of Melissa Graham. Melissa joined Cutler School in the fall of 2006, finding her home on our fifth-grade team. It is in fifth grade that Melissa has worked her magic for many years, developing mutually respectful relationships with her students. She was brave to take on new challenges as she took on our role as library media specialist in 2019 and was a district-wide second- and third-grade remote teacher last year. This year, in the final year of her career, Melissa has returned to the fifth-grade classroom. Melissa shares her passion for science and history with her students, but what we will remember her for most is her love of music. Melissa started our string jam program many years ago, bringing together fifth graders each week to share her passion for the ukulele. String jammers are a highlight of our all-school meetings and a rite of passage for our students. Just recently, Ukes on Deck brought the opportunity for younger students to also share the music. Melissa's ability to connect with her students and to help them shine with strengths they weren't always aware they had will be truly missed. Thank you, Melissa.
Mr. Manigoni.
Tonight, I have the very good fortune to speak about an outstanding educator. I'm standing next to Kevin Sano, our World Language Curriculum Leader, current middle school teacher and former high school teacher. It is almost impossible to describe the magnitude of impact that she has had on our students, school, district, and community over the past 31 years in Hamilton Wenham. I can, however, say with certainty that Kevin is a passionate, thoughtful, and supportive teacher. She thinks carefully about each student and provides, on an individual level, the experiences that allow students to maximize their language skills and also guides their growth through adolescence. Kevin is also a passionate, thoughtful, and supportive colleague. She works tirelessly to grow the talents of teachers in the World Language Department and has also ensured that there's a positive culture for educators and students in grades six through 12. I am also grateful for the service and travel opportunities that Kevin has brought to our community. For many, these are life-altering experiences that will continue to have a positive impact for years to come. And I can only say that I'm eternally grateful for having both of my own kids in her classes and having had the opportunity to accompany her on some of these trips. And it's really amazing to see how much work goes into some of these trips overseas with students, the effort that she puts in, the care and thoughtfulness that goes into all of this work. Because like I said, these experiences will continue to have an impact on these kids' lives for years to come. Now, although Kevin is retiring, her influence and impact upon her department and the schools will last for many years to come. She is guaranteed that that will take place. Thank you, Kevin, so much for your energy, enthusiasm, and care for our students and community. We will miss you.
Thank you very much, and congratulations, and thank you to our retirees. And certainly, you know, I've always gone by the mantra, once a teacher, always a teacher, so I'm waiting to see what happens next. Thank you all, and good luck, and congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you all. Okay. And just let that leave. All right. Next, we begin what might be a long agenda. All right. Oh, we need to do, we need to do the protocols. Anna, you're up again.
As elected members of the Hamilton Wenham, as elected members of the Hamilton Wenham Regional School Committee, we, including the superintendent, accept the high honor and trust that has been placed on us to ensure that the students of the district receive the best possible education. To that end, we hereby commit to the following in the conduct of our business. Number 13. The school committee will demonstrate professional and collegial relations with one another. To this end, members will work to maintain trust and mutual respect between and among each other, the superintendent, and the administration by treating everyone with dignity and respect, even in times of disagreement. All voices and concerns of individual school committee members shall be given equal weight and significance. Recognizing the importance of honoring these protocols, members will respectfully remind each other when they get off track.
Thank you. Thank you, Anna. All right. Next up, we have our consent agenda. Before we make a motion, do we have any items that people would like to have held? Okay, I have one. I'd like to hold the minutes from May 19th, 2022. And then when you're ready, Amy, we can take a motion on that.
I move that the Hamilton Wenham Regional School Committee accept the consent agenda as posted in the agenda. Except for the minutes from May 19th. Second.
Second by Jen Carr. All right, all those in favor? And that is unanimous, and the motion passes. So I held the minutes from May 19th because, if you look at the minutes, at the top, the header in bold, I consulted briefly with Mahela, our recording secretary, to double-check that this was accurate. The header in bold, if you see, all of that information represents the posting of the meeting. So the bottom of that part has the time, which says 7:00 PM to 8:45 PM. I did check with Mahela, and she said, and I did look back at every other minute. And typically, that is actually, the time is supposed to be listed as what was presented on our agenda. So it's the estimated time that the meeting would last. But this meeting actually was posted from 7:00 PM to 9:50 PM. And I noticed it for, if you studied it, you would sort of see why I noticed it. And so we're gonna, unless there's any objection, I think it should be posted at the top. Questions?
So going forward, you want the minutes to reflect the actual end time of the meeting?
No, I think it's fine. It just, in this case, I mean, I'll just tell you, one, a member was late to the meeting, and it looks as if that member arrived only one minute before the meeting ended. But that was not, in fact, the case, and that member didn't do that and was there for some portion of the meeting, so. But yes, I did double-check with Mahela that that bold part at the top should really represent what was presented to the public at the beginning. So it's the whole posting, and so it really, and that meeting really was posted to go to 9:50. It didn't actually end at 9:50, but that's.
Got it.
All right. So I don't know whether you're willing to make a motion. I don't think this needs to come back. I think we could probably just change it. David, did you have a question?
No, no, sorry.
You just looked inquisitive, that's all.
So I move that the Hamilton Wenham Regional School Committee accept the minutes from May 19th with that edit made post this meeting.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Julia Campbell. Is there any further discussion? All right, looks like we're ready to vote. All those in favor? All right, and that is unanimous, and the motion passes. Amy, do you feel like you have the information you need to get that fixed up with Mahela?
Yes.
Okay.
Point of, pointer board.
Yes.
Do we want to adjust the agenda because we have an outside guest here, or no? Do you want to move the audit up?
I.
Or no?
No, I think, I think we're going to start with the handbook. We might move the audit up, but I don't think the TERF people are here, so we might.
Yeah, we might have to move the TERF down.
We might be moving the TERF down. Okay. Is it Mr. Manigoni? Are you doing the?
No, I'll do it. It was Tom, but Tom's going to be a little bit late, so. Excuse me. Outlined in Mr. Gary's memo to the committee.
Oh, no, aren't we doing the handbook?
The handbook.
Handbook.
Oh, sorry. My apologies. It is Brian. I had the summer hiring in my list here.
Oh, yeah, nobody.
My apologies.
No, nobody.
Okay. Brian.
We're all so on top of it that we didn't need it.
Brian Manigoni, yes, to the student handbook.
All right, good evening again. So I'm here to.
Brian, I can hear you, but it's not super loud. I wonder, thank you.
Is that better?
That is better, yes.
So, good evening again. I'm here to present the handbook changes that were approved by the school council just a week ago. There's, there is one change on here that I, that we're going to strike, and I will explain why now, just that way we can skip past it. It would be the change to the tobacco and vaping rule that's in the handbook. I looked back again at the ordinance that is in Hamilton, specific to this, and it does say that on a first offense, that the consequence has to be, it's either a fine of $100 or a smoking cessation program. So it can't be an "and," it has to be an "or." So I just want to make sure that's clear. So there is no change to the tobacco and vaping rule that's in the handbook. But I still can say that we have seen a rise in that behavior in the high school. So our response to that is just going to have to be, be more vigilant, use the security cameras that are now in school, and continue to educate the students about the dangers of that kind of behavior. So I could start from the top then and just quickly talk about each change that we made. I'm not going to read everything in there. Just to say that assault on a student is not a rule that's outlined in our handbook, believe it or not. Assault on a faculty member is. But I felt it was appropriate to have that because that is behavior that can take place in a high school setting, and we want to make sure that that's clear because it is distinct from fighting, which often implies some sort of mutual behavior. Assault would be one party acting directly upon another, so we want to make sure that that's clear. The dress code, interestingly enough, this came about from a group of students who wanted to take a close look at the dress code, how it was worded, and how it can be better aligned, I think, with where kids are at right now, also to ensure that it is not discriminatory in any way. And finally, also to lay out some clear consequences, because that was one thing that was not in the handbook prior, were really clear, well-laid-out consequences for dress code violations. After the dress code, we made a change to the electronic devices rule that we have in the handbook, the main highlight there, and we tried this last week on Phone Free Friday, which was a thrill for everybody involved. Next year, students will be required to place their cell phones in a holder that kind of hangs over the door when they enter the classroom. And that is to cut down on the distraction that we see caused by cell phones. I've seen some pretty neat tricks where kids will have their laptops up, and it looks like they're paying attention, and their phone is propped up on the laptop when the teachers can't see it, and they're playing around with that. So it is a, I think, a necessary step to take. We, a couple of teachers have piloted it this year with students through second semester, and the kids really just get used to it, and it's just the way of doing business. Teachers do have the discretion to allow kids to use their phones at certain times because there are activities in classes that really call for it, taking video, taking pictures, just some of the other things that cell phones can do alongside of tablets or laptops. We also are making it clear that kids need to take their earbuds out when they are in class. That can be a problem for reasons I'm sure you can imagine. I've also learned in the last week or two that kids can actually voice text through their earbuds. So even if their cellphone is in the holder on the door, they can still text each other if they have their earbuds in it. That's actually pretty good. I like that, but we need to probably cut back on it. The next change that we decided to make were food deliveries to campus. If anybody's seen Fast Times at Ridgemont High where the pizza gets delivered to the classroom, that's not really what we're talking about. However, we are seeing Grubhub, Uber Eats, and some of these other services bringing food to school during school day. Why do we not want that? Well, it's disruptive because the front office staff has to let people into the vestibule in front of the high school. I also wonder, what are kids doing, or what are they supposed to be doing while they're ordering food? And there is a security concern around this, in that we're allowing people who, like, really don't need to be here on campus, onto campus. Not that I think they generally have any level and intent, but still, they're just people that don't really have any business here. So we've decided not to allow that. The next change that we're making has to do with the gym and weight room area, and I realize that there's a duplicated paragraph in there, but it'll just take care of that when we rewrite the handbook. Previously, we didn't allow kids down into the gym at any time except for when they have gym class. But now with the addition of power block during the school day, the health and wellness teachers do open the gym up during power block time because there are kids, that's what they need. In fact, we've had a pretty good wiffle ball league and floor hockey league running throughout the entire school year. And it's actually kind of scary to be in there at times. And finally, the last thing that we're changing is the rule, it just calls it out of bounds. We're just going to change it to unauthorized area and further stipulate that students can only be in designated areas of the building and on campus. Because as we've sort of opened the outdoors more to the school, I'm finding kids in areas, why are you out there during this particular time? It's for a mask break. We're not wearing masks right now. So we need to pull the reins in a little bit on where kids are going. Generally, I trust where they are, but you want to make sure that kids are safe, making good decisions, and that we can keep a lid on some of the movement across campus. So those are the handbook changes with respect to student conduct, and that is what the school council has purview over. And that is what we came up with for the 2022-23 school year. And I welcome any questions.
All right. Does anyone have questions? Anna?
Thank you, Mr. Manigoni. I do have a couple of questions. And I think, I guess, is maybe a little bit more procedure. Are, at some point, are we going to vote on the whole handbook later on in the year? This isn't a vote just on this little snippet, right? Or is the intention that we're voting on this tonight?
Well, the, the school council only looks at the student conduct portion of it. And, you know, the only part, my understanding, that the school committee would have interest in is anything that has to do with policy or other conflicts in policy.
Okay. I just ask this, normally, we see the whole, the whole handbook before we approve it. So I, I guess it's an open question to the superintendent and the chair. But in terms of the specific changes here, there is an asterisk next to the fine under tobacco. What does the asterisk refer to? Because it's not part of the document.
So that, I believe, when you look in the, the Hamilton Regulations, refers to how that is actually adjudicated.
So that's part of the full handbook, then?
Yes, yeah, that's in there.
This next one you're going to love, and I know that's a little bit on the Policy Subcommittee. We still have the discrepancy between all these protected classes.
Oh, yeah.
And I think it's because we haven't yet adopted the new A sections, which is on our list of things that we're going to talk about soon. But I do want to note that there is a difference between different groups in terms of the protected classes, which we have been trying to standardize, so.
Is that what we went over in the fall, I think?
Yeah, and the Policy Subcommittee, not to jump ahead too far, but we have newly adopted policies at the Subcommittee level that we're bringing back to the full committee that have been brought into alignment by the Attorney General's Office, the MASC. So that list is not quite the right list, and it's also different, in a different part of the same proposed changes. So before we, before we get tattoos of those lists, I think that whole conversation has to come back at some point.
Yeah, I agree. I think, I think the, the A section is one of the ones we're doing in the near future.
We've already done all that A section. Those were those revisions we did, the ACAB, the ACE, that whole.
So then it's just going to be a determination of which one aligns best with?
They're all the same now, but we haven't adopted it yet because they haven't come back to the full committee. So I think, right now, this is reflective of current, but we should be prepared that that's going to have to go into alignment.
I can get that, Brian.
Okay.
Yeah.
The other thing, I guess, it's more of an inconsistency. In some cases, the consequences are very specifically spelled out, strike one, strike two, strike three. But in other places, like mobile devices, for example, it simply says they'll receive disciplinary consequences, undefined. And the same thing for food deliveries, undefined consequences. Do we need to define those specifically? Or, I just feel like there's a little inconsistency where we're so clear about first offense in many ways, but it's very open-ended what those consequences are. The undefined disciplinary is under, mobile devices and food delivery to campus are both kind of, it's not clear what the consequence would be.
Yeah, it's, and if you looked at the, the rest of the handbook, that's pretty typical. It will say we'll face disciplinary consequences, so. Ultimately, the, I guess, the teacher or administrator or educator, you know, sort of decides the disciplinary consequence in a given situation. I think with the dress code in particular, because it was so vague in terms of how do you approach it, when do you approach it, and then what do you do? It's, that's probably why they, the students really wanted a very clear, stepwise approach to consequences. Because it's, again, even with a very well-spelled-out dress code, it's going to be interpreted differently by different people. And there's certain comfort levels that are associated with approaching a student who may or may not be dressed appropriately on a given day. So what they were looking for is real concrete stuff. were looking for is real concrete stuff. You know, in a, in a classroom setting, if a kid has their phone out or whatever, you're going to say, put it away, and generally, they put it away, and that's a disciplinary consequence in some ways, they're receiving a reprimand from the teacher. When you do it 50 times in the span of 30 minutes, then there's probably going to be a different disciplinary consequence. But anytime suspension could be a consequence, that is generally spelled out, for example, with the assault thing, I mean, that's probably going to be a direction that will be considered.
Okay. Yeah, so are we, at some point, then, going to vote on the whole handbook?
You know, I, I don't know the answer to that question, do we, were we anticipating that this is the, this is the vote on this?
Yeah, typically, if you, if you go through the, the actual legal.
These are all the changes to the handbook.
Changes to the handbook are here, the, the issue we'll run into is when we bring the policies back to the committee, approve the policies, we're going to have to align, realign the handbooks across the district. So that's, that's, that's one area that will be, whenever we approve the policies, we'll have to figure out how to bring it back.
Right, I just don't, usually, we approve the whole handbook, we get to see the whole thing in the fall, I don't recall ever just voting on the changes, least in the time I've been here, usually, we actually have a whole handbook and we vote on it.
Do we, I guess, for clarification, does the committee approve the handbook? High school, the high school student handbook?
High school handbook.
But the, the school council is the one that has the authority over the student conduct, they approve the changes, so what does the school committee do then? I guess that's for clarification. In, in this district, the, the school committee approves a high school handbook specifically for alignment with policy, which would be something that Brian and I would make sure would happen, so realistically, we could, these are their changes, whatever we've already approved has been approved, the dilemma we'll run into is if policy gets changed in September, we have to go back and update across the handbooks.
I'm just saying, procedurally, every time, at least, again, I've only been on the committee two years, but we've had a vote in the early, like, in August, on the whole handbook, like, that's usually how it's.
We're trying to, I think, do it now, so that way, over the summer.
Right, I actually, I actually think we talked about having it now, so that.
You have the summer to.
A long time ago, I think we talked about that, but it's a good question, that, but, but again, these are the changes, so everything else has theoretically been approved at one point.
We'll have the handbook back, is it 17th or 19th, whatever the, the August meeting is, we'll have the handbook here for approval.
So we, we do plan to bring the whole handbook back.
Yeah, we've always done that.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
I didn't realize what you were saying until now, but, so the handbook itself will come back, the high school handbook gets approved by the school committee, these are the changes specific to discipline that were approved by school council. And they're really only changes in the handbook, other than policy changes we'll make in the committee.
Which potentially, by the fall, if policy can get it done, and somehow or another, I mean, there's a chance we could get to that point, so.
So, so this pullout only began last year, after we had the whole handout, and then it was asked to actually have, to pull out the changes, so, you know, Brian had done that for us last year.
Right, maybe that's what I'm remembering, that discussion, yeah. Okay.
Yeah, because people had said.
So we'll see the whole thing in August.
With a few changes in the whole book, this way, you see the changes, and then the whole book can come before the committee, everything, these are the changes, and then policy changes as they come.
Okay.
Jen, did you have a question?
Part of this is my fault, I like the fact that we added a policy on sexual assault, or on assault, sorry, do we also have a policy on sexual harassment?
We, yes, it would be a Title IX thing, that's.
Yeah, Jen, that's part of the, the A section policies that the state and the MASC had us.
Right, but is, I don't think it's spelled out in the handbook.
No, but it references the policies, like, the policies are overarching, it refers, it would refer back to those A section policies.
So last year, we updated the student handbook with the new Title IX language, which is about to change again, from what I've been told, so, you, you, the group has already approved the Title IX language, which covers sexual harassment, so that's already been approved by us. The changes, I'm not sure when they're coming, but we keep hearing they're coming, so we'll have to probably change it again at some point during the school year. And Jen, just given the, the way that student handbooks work, you know, the word like assault would cover sexual assault, it'd be a bigger, it would be a bigger umbrella.
I spoke with the assault.
Yeah, and then the, the Title IX provisions as well would apply.
Yeah, I was just, like, I was surprised to see assault there, and not other forms of what would be considered assault, so that was just my question, and I meant to look it up before I came here, and I didn't, so I apologize.
Other people? I, I have something that's a little more concrete, does anybody else have anything? So Brian, on the, on the dress code, under acceptable items, it says hat and head coverings that do not obscure your face or eyes save for religious garments. My concern is, I think, people, we do want people to be allowed to wear masks if they are feeling that that's appropriate for them.
Correct.
Which wouldn't be religious.
Correct.
But it would be obscuring the face.
So I guess my, maybe it's less than satisfactory answer to that is, you know, that people are choosing to wear a mask, I think, either because they, they need to because they're returning from, from COVID, or there's somebody in their household who has it, or they just want to wear it for their general protection. In some ways, to me, it's, although not a perfect analogy, it's like if a kid comes in wearing a gigantic cast on their arm, they're wearing it for a certain reason, you know, it's medically and health-related, so if they chose to wear a mask, you know, we, we know what that is for, so I don't, I think I can manage that at the building level as a principle.
I just want to make sure that that was something that we, because I, I think it's, my, my take on it is it's certainly possible that we're going to see a culture shift, and that people may, you know, whatever, they wake up feeling not 100%, they might just choose to wear a mask, that might be still going on, you know, five years from now, so, but yet, it's certainly not.
Most, most kids probably aren't going to choose to wear a mask, is my guess, but there are going to be times where they do make that decision, and that's fine, and we understand what the reason is behind it.
I just want to make sure, that was. All right, anybody have anything else? So, what do you, Eric and Brian, what do you need from us?
To accept the changes for the handbook.
As, as recommended by the school council.
By the, yeah, by the high school, school council.
All right, okay, got it.
I move that the Hamilton Wenham Regional School Committee accept the language in the draft high school student handbook as written by the high school council.
Second.
Second by Jen Carr, is there any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? All right, and that is unanimous, and the motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Turf committee is here.
What was that? So. Shall I ask them? So I'm, I'm going to, those of you in the audience, turf committee, it looks like you are waiting for one more, is that right? Okay, that's fine, we've got a lot on the agenda, so I might just move some things ahead of you, so that, okay. All right, so if everyone, Regis, if you're ready, I'm going to just move, if everyone is in agreement, we're just going to move item C up, and we will do Regis's presentation of the equity audit.
Right. Kind of bumping in and out of the guest.
Oh, is the wifi not cooperating with you?
It's kind of, I'm in and out of it, so I will, I will not get into slideshow until it reconnects, but I think that we can all figure that out, so.
Okay.
Maybe that's it?
There you go.
Great, hi, everybody, it's nice to see some of you again, it's been a while, so I am going to do, I'm going to, I, I know I have 30 minutes, which is an insufficient time to talk about the equity audit, and it's an insufficient time to actually go through all of the slides that I actually sent you, so, excuse me, I'm going to, I've picked, I'm, I'm picking and choosing some of the slides, and then you have question time, so you can ask me questions on any and all of the slides. So just a quick introduction to myself, even though I know I've met most of you, but since it's on wifi or television or whatever, so my organization is Equity Journey Partners, and my name is Regis Shields, and I'm one of the founding partners, and Equity Journey Partners is a network of independent consultants who are passionate about equity in schools, and our mission is partnering with schools and their communities on their journey to become culturally proficient and equitable ecosystems that ensure students of all cultures and social identities can achieve a future inspired by boundless dreams, and we do training, we conduct equity audits, we work with family and communities to empower them in the, in the school process. All right, so tonight's objective is, once again, I'm going to provide a summary of the purpose and the process of the equity audit, I'm going to introduce the framework that we used as the analysis for the equity audit, which some of you who were at the, my meeting with you back in January or December are familiar with that, so I'll reintroduce that very quickly, and then, once again, review some of the initial findings. The final report will be delivered in just a few weeks, and it will be much more detailed, and will include more findings. I, throughout this presentation tonight, I've included on the slides some quotes, and these quotes are from focus groups, they're from open-ended responses in the surveys, and I think it's very important, because I wanted, the most important thing about an equity audit is including the voice of the stakeholders, of the community, that's what this is all about, it's not my opinion, I bring, I bring the expertise, so I wanted to make sure that I was giving you a sampling of some of the voices in the community, and I've mostly focused on educators, families, and students mostly, and I'm not going to read them. All right, so we're going to start with, I realize now I can actually look at my screen here as opposed to turn my head, so Eric's just taught me how to kind of connect through this whole thing, so, so we'll start with what is the purpose of an equity audit, so equitable school districts make a commitment to give every student, to the extent possible, what they need so they can participate fully in student opportunities that are available, and the focus of equity work is to remove those barriers so that limits students' full participation. So equity audits look for those barriers, make suggestions to remove those barriers, and also look for some really good things that are happening in the district, and make recommendations about how to scale and learn from those equitable practices that are happening. I always start every presentation with this quote by James Baldwin, it is something that informs Equity Journey's, Journey Partners work, informs my personal equity journey, and the quote is, I'm saying that a journey is called that because you cannot know what you will discover on the journey, what you will do, what you will find, or, or what you find will do to you, and I think that's a really important quote to keep in mind because Hamilton Wenham is at the beginning of their equity journey, and an equity journey is nonlinear, and it's a learning journey, and as we go through some of these findings, you might find some of them unsettling, and then you might find some of them confirming because there's a lot of overlap with the superintendent's report from last week, but if you find any of these unsettling, I just want to remind you that a lot of these findings are very, very similar to the things we find in other school districts that are just starting out on this process. Equity work is very deliberate, it's very systematic, and if you haven't, like, purposely engaged in it, there are going to be gaps that we're going to be finding, so I just want to kind of put that in context. Quick overview of the process, first of all, I applaud Hamilton Wenham, they had a great kind of governance oversight process for the equity audit, there was a leadership team in the, that comprised of some administrators in the district, and they helped with the project design to customize it for Hamilton Wenham's needs, they provided oversight and administration, they helped design the surveys, so it really spoke to the issues in Hamilton Wenham, and helped with the analysis and feedback of all of the data, and we met once a week, and I thought it was really productive, I can ask Stacy whether it was productive or not, and then, we also had a district advisory committee, and this included teachers, administrators, but also students, members of the community, and family and caregivers, and in fact, the students helped design the student survey, so they helped with product and survey design, as well as analysis, analysis input and feedback, they met about once a week, once a week, once a month, sorry about that, and the meetings were really interactive around both how to design focus groups, who we should talk to, how to design the surveys, what questions we should be asking, as well as some analysis when we got feedback, so I thought that was a really lovely way to keep the community involved, to continue that conversation with the community around the equity audit design and, and the analysis. So this is the equity audit framework, I'm not going to spend any time on it because I went over this when I last saw you, although I'm not sure everybody was here, it's going to be, there'll be much more information about it in the final report, and I'm also going to talk about it as we go through some of the findings, it's this audit that helped us think about what data, this framework, rather, that helped us think about what data we would gather, what questions we would ask, both in the interviews, some of the student focus groups, as well as the surveys. This differs slightly from the, from the diagram that you saw before, down at the bottom, there was cultural proficiency, and as a learning organization, we changed it a little bit to the equity readiness, and you'll see how we've incorporated that, as well as cultural proficiency now is equity skills, knowledge, and beliefs. So I'm going to go through each one of, each one of those as we, as we move forward. So, all right, so at the bottom of the diagram is diversity, and so that's where we're going to start, and I'm going to kind of work, work, work our, work our way up the framework. So, as you'll see, this is structured, and it'll be structured also in the report, where we'll define what diversity is, and then each one, each piece of the framework has guiding audit questions that, that, it's like a rubric, it speaks to the questions that we're, that we're answering. So diversity, the question is, has the district defined diversity in a way that makes, that takes into account all groups of students with differences or variations that may lead to opportunity or belonging gaps? This is the first slide, the next slide is kind of the finding, this is one of the slides that I'm going to skip, you can ask questions about it when we get to the question and answer piece, because I want, there are certain slides that I want to spend more time talking about. The next piece was that equity ready piece, right? It's the foundation for, you have to be ready for equity, what are the three questions? Does the Hamilton Wenham community believe that having an equitable school system is an important objective? Does the school committee share a common vision for an equitable school system? And then importantly, is there a culture of trust among staff that fosters honest and respectful conversations about diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging topics? So those are the three kind of conditions that we use to talk about, is your district ready to tackle this very big issue of equity? So I want to talk about, the first one is, does the community believe that being an equitable school system is an important objective? And what we found is that there is significant support within your school community that pursuing equity objectives should be a top priority, this commitment is evidenced by initiatives already underway, the commitment is not without its detractors, including some family and caregiver survey respondents. including some family and caregiver survey respondents. So, in the surveys, we asked the question, I believe pursuing equity, diversity, inclusion and belonging goals should be a top priority in Hamilton and Wenham. And these are the responses that we got. So, you can see in the, both in the strongly agree and the somewhat agree column, that almost all of the stakeholders think that this is a really, really important objective. One thing that I really wanna point out here is, is that the, the top four, the school committee, district leadership, school, school leadership, faculty and student support staff, almost every single member of the Hamilton Wenham community responded to the survey. We had kind of like a captive audience. The faculty did it all on one, one day, right? So, everybody responded. Family and caregivers was not that case, right? We sent out a survey, we had about two hundred and fifty responses? Yeah, we had about two hundred and fifty responses, and that doesn't mean two hundred and fifty separate families, because every, every family caregiver got to respond for each child if they were in a different school. Or, you know, they might've been in a different program. They might've been a general ed, and one might've been a special ed. So, whereas, the, the only reason why I'm, I'm saying that is, is that the bottom line represents two hundred and fifty respondents versus the top four lines represents pretty much everybody in those categories in, in the community. So, we did have some very vocal detractors within family and caregivers. But it, I don't know how, you know, the rest of the families would have responded, and I just wanted to be very, very clear about that. We're not gonna go over this one, but this is all of the great things that are already happening in the district. The superintendent talked a lot about that last week when he presented his, his work, so we don't need to spend time. Does the school community share a common vision for an equitable school system? The answer is no. But that's not a surprise, right? You're at the beginning of your equity journey, it's the next piece of work that needs to be done. So, you're, you're where you should be. I'm gonna, I was gonna skip this one, 'cause I wanna get to some of the more, the other student-focused ones. But this one is, there a culture of trust among staff that fosters honest and respectful conversations? And you can feel free to ask me questions about this in the, the question and answer piece. The next component of the framework is equity skills, knowledge, knowledge and beliefs. And the three questions we ask there, do leadership and staff hold high expectations for all students? Do they have the skills to use data to inform equity priorities and practices? And then, does the staff have sufficient equity knowledge, skills around diverse identities, cultural competence, and unconscious bias? And, excuse me? Tonight, I'm just gonna talk about the high expectations question. So, does leadership and staff hold high expectations for all students? And the finding is, while students and family and caregivers are confident that educators and staff believe that all students can succeed, the confidence placed in the school district is not completely shared by staff and leadership. Educators believe that some of their colleagues, as well as some school leaders, do not hold high expectations for all students, and a majority of school leaders are not confident that their staff believe that all students can succeed. So, what did we hear from school leaders? One hundred percent of school leaders agreed that staff at their school believe, to some degree, that all students can, can succeed, and only fifty percent strongly believe. What did we hear from faculty and student service providers? Eighty-five percent of school staff perceived, to some degree, that their colleagues believe all students can succeed, and only forty-three percent strongly believe this. So, you may be sitting there thinking, well, why? How does that finding come out of this? We've got a hundred percent and eighty-five percent in agreement that everybody can succeed. And my response to you is that not all survey questions are the same. When you're talking about expectations and whether all students can succeed, you want the answer to be strongly agree. Not somewhat, right? You want it to be strongly agree, because that is the foundation of any equitable school district. If it's not strongly, then we begin to see disproportionality in outcomes. We be, you know, who's, who is not being held to high expectations? And so, that's why I always start with this one, 'cause I think this is really, really important. You know, you need to be concerned when you only have forty-three percent of staff strongly believing that their, their peers, their colleagues hold all students to high expectations. And I'm, this isn't, these are another couple that I'm gonna skip, but you can ask questions about. This is about the sufficiency of, of knowledge and skills around diverse identities. And then, then we move on to the component, access and inclusion. Access is the gateway, it's the ability, right or permission, for all students to participate. And inclusion is the how. The creation of an environment and culture that enables all students, families and caregivers and staff to participate, thrive and belong. There's, you know, there's two pages of questions. This is the big category. And I'm not gonna go through, obviously, I'm not going through all of them, and I'm not even gonna go through all of the questions in, in bold, since I know I have a short period of time. So, but I do want to go over the first two, 'cause I think that they are really critical. So, do district stakeholders believe that Hamilton Wenham fosters a culture and climate of inclusion? And what we find is, yes, generally, but they also find that there's room for improvement in, for the culture of inclusion. And this is especially true at the middle school. And contributing to this assessment is the perception of both students and adults that not all students are respectful of other students' identities and differences. So, the survey question was, I would characterize my school culture as inclusive. And you can see, I've, I've separated this out by elementary, middle and high. You can see, at the middle school, only nine percent strongly believe that their culture is inclusive, right? With twenty-six percent somewhat or strongly disagreeing. And then, the, when I think about the neither, either, neither agree nor disagree, I always think that as they're just choosing not to express an opinion on this topic. So, the second part of that is, okay, let's dig a little bit deeper about why people don't think that their school culture is inclusive. And we asked a survey question about, do you think that students in this school respect each other's identities and differences? And students, only sixteen percent of students strongly agreed with this. Forty-six somewhat agreed, and twenty-three percent of students disagree with that statement. For educators, sixty-three percent perceive students always or usually respect students who are differ them, different from them, but almost forty percent believe they're only doing it sometimes or rarely. So, so, then we start looking at, okay, if it's not an inclusive culture, what's happening in that culture? And so, the question is, do schools provide a safe environment such that each student can comfortably and safely access all available opportunities? And students generally feel safe at school. When they're asked, do you feel, feel safe at school? Most say yes. And then you have to dig down into that question. Okay, what does that really mean? Students do not report high, high levels of incidents of harassment, stereotyping or disrespect. There are some areas of concern, however. And those areas of concern are eighteen percent of students report behavior of harassment, stereotyping and disrespect around grades and academic ability. Nineteen percent around body type. Twenty-four percent, a quarter of all students, around appearance. Twelve percent around physical or mental challenges, and twelve percent around political views. So, so those are the areas that rose to the top as being issues around harassment, stereotyping and disrespect. But, when we start breaking it down into traditionally marginalized identity groups, we see that the incidence of harassment, stereotyping and disrespect increase. So, many students who identify from historically marginalized identities report high levels of harassment based on these identities or characteristics others may associate with these identities. And educator observations are in sync with student experiences. So, students of color report being harassed, stereotyped or disrespected by their race and ethnicity. Thirty-nine percent indicated that they did. LGBTQ plus, fifty-one percent reported being harassed, stereotyped or disrespected based on their sexual orientation. Thirty-two percent based on their gender or gender identity. Students with IEPs, thirty-two percent reported being harassed because of their grades and academic ability. Students with IEP with, with respect to physical and mental health, twenty-five percent reported that. And then I have family income or economic status, and I have, I have not, not applicable, because it was not in the student survey, but it was in the faculty survey. And it was, it was fair, I think it was maybe about forty percent in the faculty survey observing that, that type of behavior. But, I, I, sorry, I didn't include that here. So, then, then, when, when students consider, is my school safe? They often think about, when they factor into safety, right? They think about, can I report this? And if I report it, will somebody do something about it, right? And, and that finding is not encouraging. If they observed or experienced acts of unfair treatment, many students are not completely comfortable reporting those acts to staff. And some students, particularly students of color and students who identify as, and this is, it's a higher level for students of color and students who identify as LGBTQ plus. And one-third of all students are not confident the staff will take action when they receive a report of unfair treatment. So, forty percent of students report not feeling comfortable reporting it, and thirty-one percent of all students are not confident that staff will take action. And one student in a traditionally marginalized identity group reported that, there's so few of us that if I report something, everybody's gonna know. And I'm gonna feel that, right? So, so I think that's a very, that's kind of very telling about what the culture and climate is, is about. Okay. So, the next three slides are about special education. I'm not gonna talk about them right now. I know it came up in the superintendent's report last week, and there'll be a large section in the written report about special education. I wanna jump to some other things that I wanna talk about. I'm not gonna talk about that one either. I wanna talk about belonging, 'cause belonging is, belonging is really key, right? Belonging is one element that you have to have, that feeling of belonging before you can achieve. And belonging is the extent to which students feel appreciated, validated, accepted and treated fairly within the district, school and classroom. So, what did, what did we find? Do all students feel like they belong at their school? Well, most students do feel a sense of belonging. For many students, this sense of belonging is not strong. This is particularly true for students who identify from historically marginalized identity groups, especially LGBTQ plus, students of color, and students who qualify for special education services. So, as you're reading this chart, and you can see that what I have is, the top line is all students, middle school and high school. And then, since we didn't do an elementary school survey, we did ask families of elementary schools whether they felt that their child belonged. And so, that's the response of the family and caregivers of elementary school. And then you can see the difference between students who identify as white and students of, of color, where, you know, the difference of strongly agree is thirty-eight percent of white students strongly agree, twenty-eight percent of all students of color strongly agree. LGBTQ, only thirteen percent of those students feel like they, they belong strongly. And forty-four percent of their straight peers feel like they, strongly agree with the statement that they belong, feel like they belong. And then you can see the difference between students with IEPs, students with 504 plans, and then those students not receiving special education services. And you will see that throughout the report, when you get it, that when we start asking these questions and we start breaking it out by the historically marginalized identity groups, that you will see a disparity in, in, in the answers. So, then what comes next, right? So, I always like to finish and think about what comes next when we ask students, like, so what happens next? And what we heard from students is, one, they want their voice in the conversation, so that's why I included, take teenagers' thoughts seriously. Two, they want students to learn about diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging issues. And then, the other thing is, I included in here one that says focus more on mental health. There was a lot of responses about kind of the academic pressure at Hamilton and Wenham, and, and, and mental health issues in student responses. So, it's not necessarily an equity issue, but it is a diversity issue, in a sense, when you think about students who have experienced some trauma, that may be a piece of diversity. So, I'm gonna stop there. You can ask me questions on any of the slides or anything else. I, I am painfully aware that I am standing in between you and a Celtics game, so I wanted to, I wanted to keep my time to, to my limit, so, questions?
Thank you so much, Regis. And unfortunately, I don't think we're gonna be, no matter how quick you were, we have a long meeting. Thank you for that. And I think I'll, I'll just open it up to questions, and Julia?
Thank you so much. So, when I read this, I mean, I think most of the committee members will echo this, I was pretty, I wasn't surprised, but I was pretty shocked by some of the findings. But I have a specific question. Where does religion fit into this? Because we have had several complaints from the Jewish community specifically. So, I just was wondering where maybe religious differences and equity around, you know, religious observances comes into play in the survey questions?
Yep, so, there, when I, when I listed, like, some of the question, and you'll have this, all of the, as part of the report, all of the survey questions will be in, in the report, so you can see how the questions were asked. It is like, you know, are you discriminated against because of your race, your religion, your things, right? So, religion was there, it didn't rise to the, it didn't rise to the top. But that said, there has been a number of comments in the open-ended responses to the surveys about religious holidays, religious activities at school. It also came up, actually, in our advisory committee meetings also. It was also a big comment also. So, you will find a piece of that in the report, because, once again, we have a small community, it doesn't always rise to the top as a voice. And one of the slides that I skipped at the very beginning is defining what diversity in your district is. And I think that many in your district like to think about diversity in kind of these very narrow terms, right? But I, I might have a religion one here, I don't, no, maybe I don't. But, you know, a lot of people talk about, we need to think about neurodiversity, and this is the one about the trauma at the bottom. And we can't just think about diversity in terms of state and federally kind of defined categories. And a great one for Hamilton Wenham is free and reduced lunch, right? That's a really narrow care, category when you think about the income diversity in your district, right? So, the challenge is, is how do you wanna think about diversity? And to think about, what are the groups of students that we think, that we're always talking about when we sit down, 'cause there are issues, right? And think about it that way. So, one of the big pieces of work is, what does diversity mean in our district? And as you define it, you also have to be able to tag it and count it, right? That's why, you'll see data, we didn't talk about it, but data shows up a number of times, because to be an equitable school district, you need to be able to measure and track.
I'd have two quick, quick questions. So, should we be concerned about the sample size of two and So should we be concerned about the sample size of two hundred and fifty responses?
For the family.
The family and caregivers?
And so, you should, it was actually, I mean, I was I was happy you got two hundred and fifty. So you shouldn't be consider, you shouldn't be concerned about that. But I don't know who we got, who answered, right? I know that you had about, I think there were about maybe like nineteen percent of the people who responded actually had children in special education. So I'm comfortable when I'm talking about, this is, this is how family and caregivers of sped children are responding, okay? We didn't have a lot of, I'm trying to think off the top of my head now. I cannot report what families of students of color, because we didn't get enough responses from that. I don't believe we had enough responses for families of free and reduced lunch. So that will be part of kind of the recommendation, is like, as you move forward. I know that the district is planning on doing some strategic planning in in the fall. It's about thinking about how you get people to participate in different ways. You've gotta reach out to those other voices to make sure they're participating.
Exactly. So that's really on on us?
Yeah.
Okay. And my my third question is, so, the first slide, you say, you will suggest effective ways and identify existing practices, and that's gonna come in the June thirtieth. So this is more for us to reflect, digest
Yeah.
the responses, and then there'll be some action steps for us to take.
So the action steps are going to be, it's not gonna be something like, you need to adopt this program.
Just suggestions.
It's it's going to be, you need to, something like this. You need to get more, when you get student voice, or when you get family voice, you need to make sure that these, you need to try different strategies, right? There's a lot of work that needs to come out of the strategic planning that builds the specifics, because it's not for me to give you a specific strategy as opposed to a recommendation about how you go about formulating what you're gonna do. Does that make sense?
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
David Frankel?
Thank you. I'm curious how you, and also how you think the respondents define success? You know, when you talked about expectation of success? How 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 many dimensions were that?
We didn't define, we didn't, we didn't define, it wasn't defined. It was a, it was just a question about success.
And how do you define that?
How do I define it? And it's not for, well, like, this feels like I'm gonna punt it back to you, but which in a sense I am. It's it's a community-defined definition of success, right? So, you, when you, so so you might define success around, you spent a lot of time this year developing what a portrait of a graduate is, right? And then figuring out, how do you measure all of those things within the portrait of a graduate? And that's how you would define success. You've made that first step in defining what success is, because this is what you want your graduate. What does that mean at the third grade level? What does it mean at the sixth grade level, right? Tracing it back and figuring out what the metrics are around that. So I would say that you've kind of had a high, you already have a high-level definition in your district about what success means for a student.
Thank you.
Jen?
Included in your recommendations, are there going to be recommendations about how we could modify the curriculum to make it more inclusive? And also, will there be short-term recommendations and long-term recommendations? Because, I mean, obviously, this is not where we want to be.
Yeah.
It's not a ship you're gonna turn around overnight, either.
Yeah. So, um, so no, the the recommendations will not be as specific as you need to adopt X's, like, textbook, because that is, you know, the curriculum. That's for your curriculum committee. But the rec, what you'll see is, is that, right now, your curriculum, according to your staff, is not diverse, right? So I can recommend, I probably will recommend some, well, state of Massachusetts has some tools that they offer to how to review a curriculum for diversity. I'll probably put in there, research by N Y U, which also has that. So so I'm not gonna recommend a particular kind. I am going to recommend that, you know, the first thing you need to do is, you know, before you start kind of supplementing, is where are you, right? This is what staff believe, this is what they're telling. But, you know, you need to do that curriculum audit piece.
Thank you. Thank you, Regis, for all of this. I have, so I have two questions and sort of an observation. My high-level observation is that the data around marginalized groups and how they feel in the district, I knew that we had some challenges there, but I will say candidly, that the percentages are even higher than I expected. And that's worrisome, because when you have more than half of your LGBTQ students reporting feeling harassed, I mean, that's, that is statistically worrisome. I would have been worried if it was, you know, for me, I'd be worried if it was one percent. But I think to see something as high as fifty is.
Yeah. You'll see that, when you get the full report, that the the LGBTQ responses are always kind of like higher or lower, depending on what the question is being asked, right? So when we asked, you know, you know, do you feel stereotyped or harassed in these particular categories? They're high across, they're higher than everybody across all categories. What you see in this particular slide is the categories that are particularly associated with their historically marginalized identity.
Yeah. So, I mean, those that, those data points are not totally surprising at all, but the severity is there. So, that's sort of a high-level observation. I could talk a lot about this. There's two questions I have, though, just to wonder if our district, in your experience, is any sort of anomaly, I guess? One of them has to do with sort of the staff perceptions of other staff. I am surprised to the degree at which other staff do not think that their own peers have the same idea for success. And I do agree, there is no community definition of success. And I think that that, even with the portrait of a graduate, it might be hard to do that. And success for one student looks different for another. That's actually sort of the point of equity, right? It's not supposed to be the same for everyone.
Well, which is why, which is why you have faculty looking at other faculty and not thinking that there might be that expectation of everybody has, that has that level of success.
Right. So that, I think that, to me, it's, that's, that was a surprising piece of data. In your experience with districts and our position, is that unusual to have that kind of cleavage amongst the staff?
No, I I see it quite, quite a bit.
Okay. And it was interesting, because that question was, I had to read it about seventeen times to understand
Oh, sorry.
the nuance between, it's okay, you know, what is perceived amongst how people believe about themselves versus how they see their peers? Like, it was, it's a really
I don't think we, I don't actually think I asked what you see about yourself on this particular one, right?
But the difference between the first part and the second part is, there's a really complicated piece of nuance there that so, you know, a hundred percent of school leaders agree their staff, the school believes. To some degree, students can succeed, only fifty percent strongly believe this. And then, sort of, you know, the difference between, not so much strongly versus not strongly, but it just seems like there's a, there's a real gap between what educators might think of success for themselves versus how other people, their their peers are achieving that or not achieving that. So I I wanna, I wanna unpack that a little, and I would be curious to hear the the leadership teams and superintendent's thoughts about that when we get the full report, so.
Yeah. So let me, I I just, you just reminded me that, so there's two questions here, right? The first question in the survey is, you know, do your peers, you know, does, you know, does the staff at your school believe that all students can succeed, right? And the second question is, are your staff invested and take ownership of the success of all students, right? So one is a belief, and the other is an action, right? You can see them next to each other, right? And so, you can believe it, but you might not even be taking action around it, right? So the belief is high, and the action is lower, right?
And the sense of personal ownership is low, right? Like, what, only sixty-seven percent somewhat agree that people are taking ownership, which is, you can't have success without ownership for your work.
No, but but I, so, so one of the things that I do want to say, yes, this is a problematic finding. But I think that it's a foundation that fits really well for moving forward, right? Because you do have a hundred percent of leaders somewhat, you know, in that agree category, and eighty-five percent of faculty saying, yeah, most of our staff kind of like agree. It's a place to work from, right? It's not like a huge trou, right? But it is still a statistic that you need to be concerned about, right? Because even strongly agree is not an absolute, right? It gives wiggle, it gives wiggle room.
Yeah. That was one data point that intrigued me. The other one, you had a slide that talked about disproportionate representation of
Sped.
of economically disadvantaged and male students among students with disabilities. That one really surprised me. Could you unpack that a little bit? And I'm curious to know if that is something that you see often in districts, or is that also potentially anomaly?
Oh, yeah. So I think it's a sped slide. Let me see if I can find it. Yeah. Right. So, so this is the, this is the, so if we look at this in two thousand twenty-two, right? This is sixty-one percent of males are, how is it, percent of total sped, right? So, so this is the male enrollment, right? And this is the sped enrollment. So the males are disproportionately, this is, this, this, this tracks national data, right? Economically disadvantaged students, as well as male students, are disproportionately represented in Hamilton-Wittenham and in most school districts across the country. You'll find that in national data. Now, why is that the case? That's the thing you need to unpack, right? Why is that the case? Some of it, if we had the categories, and I don't know if we had the categories, you might find it under learning disability, behavior disability, boys are over, you know, are acting out. They may, it may be an unconscious bias coming into play that are putting male students in a special ed category rather than dealing with the behavioral issues.
But it's not, it's not unusual. You said it tracks nationally.
Tracks national, yes.
I am intrigued by that one, just in terms of the bias questions, because it's, I do feel like, just anecdotally, you, I hear so many more parents, you know, when boys are acting out or boys are having challenges, you know, this sort of casual, like, oh, it's just boys being boys, and boys are always rough. And it's just, I do wonder about bias there.
Yeah. There's a disproportionality in discipline also. Oh, wait, I gotta make sure I'm getting my districts correct. I believe that there is a disproportionality in discipline also. I need to go back, I need to go back and look at it. But it 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 wouldn't surprise me, right? Because we generally are more apt to discipline a boy. I will say, though, one of the interesting things that I'm quite fascinated with, and it will be in the report, is the difference between the way the high school boys move through school versus the high school girls. They have a higher sense, the boys have a higher sense of belonging than the girls. They have a higher sense that they're being supported by teachers than 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 the girls do. It's a real, it's a very interesting dynamic, I think that's how.
And you've actually been able to measure that?
Through survey questions.
I look forward to seeing the full report. There's a lot here to unpack. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Just a quick comment.
Absolutely.
I mean, boys have a higher incidence of ADHD. That's a, that's national. So that's part of what drives that difference in behavior.
And that, you know, that may be a piece of it too. As I said, this is the disproportionality. We need to take a look at, like, what is driving this by looking at the different categories.
Jen?
Sorry, last question.
I've heard that before.
Promise. Did we look at the breakdown in terms of how students feel supported by subject? Because it's not uncommon for girls to feel differently about math and science than they do about English and humanities. And implicit bias is definitely there.
No, we did not look at by subject.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody else? Well, I just, I actually just wanted to say, a lot of the things have already been said, but I wanted to say that I really appreciated, and I think the most, for me, the most important slide, I think, was your first slide or maybe your second slide about the journey, that, like, this is what we signed up for, was hard truths.
Right.
And that's a really important step in the journey, is being willing to hear it, having it said out loud. And, like, it does, it feels a little bit scary, like, where are we gonna go? But I I'm so appreciative, like, that journey quote that you had at the beginning, I know it's helping me. Like, this, we don't know what this is gonna do and and what's gonna involve, but it's exciting to to dig in.
If I, if I came back with nothing, it would be amazing.
Well, and and that would be, I would imagine, to be honest, impossible, right?
Yeah.
Because we can always get better, always.
Well, and also, equity is something that's very deliberate. You have to be really deliberate about, you need to be thinking about it, and you need to be systematic about it. I mean, I was really kind of, I was actually, oh, Brian's not here anymore. I was really kind of excited to hear about the changes in the the dress code. What is really fascinating is, is that in many districts, we constantly, in the student open-ended responses, hear a lot about dress code. Not one response, not, no, not one student mentioned dress code. So I thought it was interesting that it came up there. So, I, and that's why I always like to end with student voice. Like, the more you can involve students in this conversation and the changes that are being made, it's really, really important.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Much appreciated, and we look forward to the full report at the end of June.
Thank you, Regis. Can I just say one thing?
Eric?
I just, I just want to follow this up. Thank you, Regis. I appreciate the presentation and and the work that you and your team has done, along with our team, Stacy and Liz and Ryan and Kristen Lazaro, who have been working all year with a number of different groups and committees and trainers, trying to get the work done, while also working with Regis to get the information to her. I think it's important to note, there are a lot of people in the district involved, and I I really want to caution people. It's, it's, this is not putting us in a negative light. It's bringing the things that are important to our district to everybody's attention. And I think that's important to note, because it's easy to go, oh, look at, look at Hamilton-Wittenham. And the reality is, we have a lot of work to do, we know that. But it also works well with our MTSS work, and our work with DEIB, and also along the lines of what we do in our schools through the strategic planning process. So it'll all really wrap together well. And we'll just have to work together to figure out the, kind of, the best ways and the things we want to attack first, the priorities, if you will. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Okay. All right. And the, I think the rest of our audience is gonna present. So, I think if the turf committee is ready, we're ready for you.
Thank you for dominating me in my co-host table.
Absolutely.
Did you win?
We did, yeah.
Congratulations. So can I ask you to make sure, when you're speaking into the mics, so that, for the recording, because you're being recorded? And and
And introduce yourself.
Please introduce yourselves, and also
Yeah, whenever it occurs.
Okay.
Ready? Thank you. Yeah, just to start, I'm Tim Fazio. I'm the current president of the Hamilton-Wittenham Little League, and Peter can introduce himself.
Peter Gordo, just a volunteer, and I live in Hamilton.
Yeah, I live in Wittenham, so. All right, great, thanks, Eric. So, we won't take up too much of your time, but are here for as many questions as as you have. We came here to give you an update on what the, you know, high school field improvement working group has been doing over the last, I don't, for me, probably around six months, and for folks like Peter, ten years. I mean, for a long time, this sort of project has been going along in fits and starts, but actually making a lot of progress. As you'll see, as we walk through this overview presentation, we're at the point now where it's time to do something. And it really can come to the fore, especially with the folks here, to get this, get this moving. So if we look at the first points, so, the goals of the project, relatively straightforward, right? Bring the students' events back on campus. It's been year over year that Hamilton-Wittenham athletics have been going all over the place, right? And in doing so, sort of feeds to the next And in doing so, sort of feeds to the next pieces of, sort of, the trickle-down effect. Been using uptown resources, town parks, having extra cost for the transportation of students. It's just really worn on the athletes, on the parents, on the coaches, on building the sense of campus community, on building the sense of team, really on just having a good school experience for our kids, right? And that's not just the kids at school, at the middle school, high school, but that's the town kids. That's the people in our towns that don't have kids, that want to use our facilities, that can't, because they're either in poor condition, or they're being used by the kids. So it really has this tremendous, you know, trickle-down effect that we're all, I think, trying to stop and rectify. In addition, and as Eric can probably talk to you, you guys probably know much more than I do, there are some serious accreditation issues with the status of our facilities at the school. So we really need to combat that. And again, sort of the final piece is just the overall sense of, you know, pride and community that we all want in the place that we live and send our kids to school, which this is hurting. Next, please. So what we've done is, and we, I say we, and I include myself when it's not really me, an entire group of people have gotten together. We commissioned a civil engineering firm to start some project planning a while ago. They've updated it, they've done a fantastic job. This is the current schematic. You can see, it's really, the only thing there that is quote-unquote "new" is the tennis courts. The, and that's sort of in the central piece, you can probably see pretty easily. Everything else is already existing footprint. It's just going to be made modern, made safe, made accessible, lighted. It's going to be what our students need and deserve for modern athletic competition, what our town frankly needs. We can go back to this whenever you like, but if you go to the next slide, please. So the details, right? The new stadium, and I say new, meaning it's gonna be the same footprint, but the entire stadium is going to be redone, turf field, new track, new track and field, you know, amenities for the different events that they have. Ideally, a full amenities building that includes bathrooms, finally, right? Storage, good concessions. The baseball and softball fields will be turf, and the, for the baseball fields, that sort of includes the following bullet, the all-purpose fields. It's, has, will have an ability to host all kinds of sports, whether full games, practices, what have you. The tennis courts, they'll be, I believe there's four, which is excellent, and they fit all right into the area by the project adventure course now, with little to no impact, as far as we can tell, on the project adventure course, which is great, because it'll move our, and I think, I think the girls are playing the state championship in a day or two, I mean, our fantastic tennis team, back on campus, as opposed to shipping them out all over Cape Ann for practices for the last, I don't know how many years. So that would be tremendous. The, and then for the, we have the, the practice field or practice field ability where the baseball field would be. And then, almost as important as a lot of this, is adding some lighting. Not only just to, it's not simply about being able to play games later, it's about keeping our kids safe. It's really, the, the lighting situation around there is terrible. And it's out in the back, it's off the road, I mean, you really want to just sort of brighten things up and make things, you know, a safer, more attractive place for people to be. Okay, so that's the, that's the overview. We have a, a great, and we'll show you the link afterwards, FAQ that the committee has spent a lot of time drafting and putting additional details in. And then, if you go to the next slide, please? Okay, we go to Peter, and he'll give you a little more detail on what Gail has helped us with as far as project financing and a plan for the go-forward.
I don't know how Tim got to tell you what we get, and I get to tell you what it costs. That doesn't seem fair, but... So, and I'll get to the detail in a second, but the, the overall cost of the entire project that Tim just described, softball field, multipurpose baseball field, stadium, the, the support buildings, new track, the lighting, is in the, is between 12 and 13 million. The 12, that, that's based, Gail has provided, our civil engineer has provided us with that estimate, based on current projects that they're working on. They're constantly updating their database, so they have a reasonably good handle. It also includes a substantial contingency, and what I would describe as an escalation component, because, as you're all aware, construction costs are a little bit out of control right now, and I think it's just prudent to, to carry something for, you know, the, the increase in cost over time. We, of that 12 or 13 million, we believe that the funding, you know, really can only come from three places. One is the community, what we're calling a debt exclusion, fundraising, which we're committed to, and grants, you know, state and local. I think, you know, state may be a challenge, but local, certainly both CPCs have expressed support, there may be other avenues as well. We think that sort of a one-third, two-thirds model is achievable, one-third private fundraising and grants, two-thirds community funding. So Eric, if you'd go to the next slide. This is a breakdown of the overall budget by component, general, and I'll, I'll walk through them quickly. General conditions is, is a construction term, but it typically includes everything that isn't being, you know, isn't being left behind. It's, it's a bond to secure the project, it's the general conditions of the, of the contractor, things like fencing, temporary toilets, trailers, that kind of thing, the contractor's overhead and profit, and the mobilization and demobilization. Erosion control, site prep, demolition, it's the stripping of all the soil, it's the rough grading of the site, that sort of thing. The track and field project is approximately a $2.6 million component. The, the baseball field, a $2.4 million component, the four tennis courts, just under $300,000. The new softball field, which is lit, a million two. And we have put in an allowance. This is one of the areas of our budget that I would still consider soft, this allowance for storage, press box, and amenities. We have reasonably good information about the storage building and the press box, the amenities building, because it's a vertical structure, Gail isn't as well versed in, so we've carried a million and a half dollars to cover those three things. Gail has indicated that they think that's a reasonable sum. So that, that's a $10 million sort of hard cost budget. On top of that, we're carrying a 20% contingency for the unanticipated things that will inevitably come up as we go through this process. It may be that we're dealing with soil conditions we didn't anticipate, or it may be there are components of this that, you know, we haven't yet anticipated that need to get added. But there's 20% of contingency there. On top of that, we've added another 10, it's, it's almost 10% more for this cost escalation idea. Inflation is currently running in the neighborhood of 3/4 of a percent per month. We've carried half a percent per month for 18 months. The engineering is the cost, the design cost, and, and I should go back, the reason we're carrying less is that we think that, you know, I, I, my own feeling is that the inflation trend can't continue indefinitely. So that's why we backed off a little bit from what's, what we're seeing currently. In the engineering services, we need to design the rest of the project to get to the point where we can put it out to bid and buy it. So that's the, that's the balance of the engineering services. So that comes to just shy of $13 million with almost, you know, $2.8 million worth of what I would describe as contingency. Going forward, I think, we're here tonight, as Tim said, to update you, we've been working on this project for, you know, the, in, in this, this phase of the project for about eight months. Gail has been working on, on their study and, and updating it for about six. And so we felt it was time to come back and, and brief you folks on, on what we've learned. I think we now need direction from the committee in terms of how to move forward. We need, our recommendation is that this should be a one-phased $13 million project. Obviously, if budget, you know, budget's always an issue, but if, for some reason, the committee said there's only eight, we would have to go back and figure out how to phase this. I think phasing inevitably leads to greater overall costs, and probably some significant inconvenience down the road as you try and, you know, work around A to get to B. But certainly, you know, we, there are ways to do it. We've laid out what we think are some reasonable target allocations of funds, or of funding for the, for the three buckets. You know, the, the two-thirds being that eight and a half million dollars to the school, and then another four between private fundraising and local grants. We've taught, how to, how to move this forward? We've talked with Eric a little bit about that maybe this gets somehow presented, not necessarily incorporated into the elementary school project, but presented to the community as part of that, or as, you know, as a holistic, you know, academic facility upgrade. Eric can probably describe how that would work better than I can. But obviously, we've got a lot of work to do educating town boards. Once we, once we have some direction, we need to build some consensus and get some education, because, you know, both towns are gonna have a lot to say about what we can afford and what we can't. And eventually, or sooner rather than later, we'd like to get to town meeting and put the project before town meeting, so that we can know what we're gonna build, whether we, you know, have, have the support of the community and can go forward with the project. If you go to the next slide, Eric? So what we'd like to leave here tonight with, or, you know, at a, at a future meeting, if you need to deliberate, is your, you know, what, what support we have from the committee. We would then, once we know that direction, we will begin the, the fundraising process, we'll begin the local grant process. And we also need to begin the, we need to begin the permitting process. A portion of this project was permitted back in 2017. There are two new components, the tennis courts, the softball field, and those, we now need to bring those to the town boards, or to the plant, to the planning board in Hamilton, of Concom and Hamilton. And, you know, I think eventually they'll sort of look at the whole thing as one project, they won't look at those discrete elements. Although, we do have permits for the stadium, the baseball field, and so forth. So with that, I think that's, I think that's our last slide. I just, I was looking through a study we did back in 2014 that Gail, we commissioned in 2014, and Gail did it, and they were talking about the condition of the fields and the use of the fields. And I read that, you know, the appropriate use for a grass field is in the neighborhood of 200 to 250 uses per year, and a use is a practice by a team for an hour or two. Most of our fields, we're getting in the, most of our fields at the high school, we're getting in the neighborhood of 350 to 375 uses per year. The, a turf field with lights will support up to 750 to 800 uses per year. So we're gonna get a tremendous amount of utility out of these turf fields if we can pull it off. So I think Tim and I are happy to answer questions.
Okay, thank you. I have some questions, but I'm gonna let the committee start. Amy?
Thank you so much for laying all this out. I think this is a great project, and I agree with a lot of the reasoning why we need to do this project. I'm wondering if, and I apologize if this has been asked and answered in the past, but is there a breakdown of costs incurred as a result of not having these facilities, so that when we are making decisions about budget, we can say, like, oh, having this will save us X amount per year on transportation, et cetera?
We haven't, unless, I'm, I'm not aware of, we have talked about all of those things, the busing costs, the mowing costs, the, you know, the repair costs, all those things. I think we could assemble those, and portions of them have been pulled together. I don't think we've ever done a comprehensive, this is what we're spending because we don't have the right facilities, but we certainly could.
Okay, thanks. Anna?
Just to follow up, I bet you Craig and Vinnie and Tom together could probably put those numbers together pretty easily, and I do think that'd be a really compelling piece of data. I'll just say right at the top, like, I support this 1,000%. I mean, I'm really happy that the committee made this a priority over the last couple of years and kind of restarted it. So I think, I'm cautiously optimistic that we can get the community support we need to do this. My one, my one sort of tactical question is the private fundraising component of it, and maybe the turf committee exists, or maybe the Ed Fund could take on this role, does there need to be a new incorporated entity to receive those funds? Could they be given straight to the district? What's the mechanism for private fundraising, and is that something that we need to kind of work through?
So I think the, the expectation is that we, we have a, we have a 501(c)(3) that's ready to go. The paperwork's all done. It has not been filed, but it's a matter of, you know, it's a matter of filing it, and we're good to go.
Okay.
So the 501(c), 501(c)(3) would receive the funds and then turn those funds over once the, once the project is, you know, assured of going forward.
Okay. And I guess the only other comment I would make, just in looking at all this, is I like that you've, you've sort of laid it out as all together, and this is really an expectation of what we need. And I think it's gonna be really important to position it to the community that, you know, we've deferred this project for so long that it is now a liability, not having these fields. Anyone who plays any kind of sport knows that our situation is just woeful compared to the rest of the Cape Ann League and other, even other youth leagues. You know, I'm board member for youth soccer, and, you know, the iron rail fields are great, but the, this is, that can't support everything, you know? So I think that in positioning it to the community, really explaining, like, this is the moment to really ask for what we need, and it's a high mark, but in the scheme of what, you know, the value it would return, it's really important. So thank you so much for your work on all of this. And I just have one other tactical question. Jen Carr is now our new representative, right? Since Michelle Horgan, who I see in the back of the room, had been on this committee, Jen Carr is now the committee's official liaison to the turf field committee, is that right?
I think so, yes.
Awesome, thank you, guys. Great work.
Do you have a question? Go ahead.
Well, first of all, I love the project, I love the idea, but it would be irresponsible of me to not ask Vinnie, and we swing it.
That has to go to the voters for...
I understand that, but, like, will we require an override to get this past the voters?
Definitely.
I need a debt exclusion.
Debt exclusion. Wouldn't technically be an override.
And I believe you have to go to the ballot, right? The debt exclusion also, how it would have to pass at town meeting and at the ballot.
So this would end up being a private, like, a, a separate loan that gets voted on, that the payments of the loan is what actually would be paid out of the school budget? Laidman's terms.
Right. It's also important to know that none of this is covered by the state. So this is a, this is a sole pro, pro, project, excuse me, project that we would undertake without any support from the state. There's no reimbursement, like, like the school building project, so that, that's important to keep in mind. I think the contingencies that are built into this are important to support that. And, you know, when you, when we look at this project, and you say, okay, we're gonna just use the, the number from the slideshow, we're gonna raise 2.5 million, the rest is, is coming from the communities, apportion the same way we would apportion the budget. So realistically, once, once the debt exclusion is approved, then the apportionment process would happen, just, just, that's where Vinnie would pick it up, so that each community would get, I don't know if you remember in that, in our budget process, each community would get their, whatever their percentage is at that particular time. And then we, we also have to look at creativity in the, the, the way we finance or bond, there, there are a couple of different ways we can do it. But the debt exclusion also keeps it from driving the levy limit. So it, there's a lot to look at in a, in a bigger, a bigger forum, I think, where we can sit down and hash through it. We also have to get together some realistic language that's acceptable, so we'll have to, we'll have to go to our attorneys to get some language acceptable for town meeting, realistically looking at April, I would, I would say, to, to get something on that April warrant in, in both the communities. And, and it's, again, it's, it could coincide with that second module of the MSBA project, that we're, we're in the first module now, so my, my recommendation to the committee is, would be, well, will be, and to, to kind of put these together along with the high school roof project, because at some point in the next two years, I would say, we'll probably... Because at some point in the next two years, I would say we'll probably get accepted there, so we need to really be realistic, rather than trying to go back and then ask for another special meeting and ask for another special meeting. I think the, the probability is, is much higher if we look at it all together. There are, there are some caveats. We, we don't know exactly what we'll get reimbursed from the, from the MSBA project, so that, that makes it a little bit difficult to, to nail a number down. But I do have a meeting next week with the two, the town manager, town administrators, and all the finance people to, to talk about not only the MSBA piece, but this, this portion and the, the roof portion moving forward in the, the most realistic ways to do it.
And my last question, obviously, I really hope the fundraising works, but if it doesn't, is the school district back on the hook for it?
I think the presumption, the presumption all along has been that nothing would move forward unless all the sides, you know, were able to perform. That's, I think if, if we were only able to raise a million and a half, I think there'd be a decision that would have to be made, you know, at the end.
So Ken, oh, go ahead, I was going to jump in on that, yep.
It would probably be built in as a not to exceed situation. So you'd go to the towns for, say, 12 and a half, not to exceed a particular number, say 12 and a half million. And then whatever they get for, for donations would offset that cost. So the idea was try, try to give them a realistic window and keep it within that window. And then, and then if 2 million comes, or if a million comes, then we have the ability to, to stretch that out if we need to.
Thank you.
It's a little more complex than that, but it's just kind of simplifying.
No, you're giving me the general gist.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Eric, would you mind going back one slide? I, I realize that I did a lousy job of trying to explain what the schedule was, and, and this slide is probably a lot more confusing than it needs to be, and there's also a couple of typos in it. But I think the, the most likely scenario is that we try to get on the warrant for the spring town meetings. We get, you know, presume, hopefully we get support from the communities, they say go forward. We would then authorize the engineers to prepare construction drawings, which they would do, say, in the fall of, you know, the summer and fall of 2023. It would then go to bid at the end of 2023 with the anticipation of a project that would start in, let's say, May of 2024, to be completed in the fall of 2024. It likely disrupts one high school season, or at least a port, you know, some portion, we'd have some fields, but wouldn't necessarily have others. And, one other thing I was just going to say about that. There, there is a, the reason we put those earlier dates in there is if this committee said, we got to have those fields within the next, you know, 14 months, there is conceivably a path where you still go to the spring town meetings, but you're starting, you're starting construction next spring. I think it's incredibly unlikely that all those, all those ducks would line up. But that's why we put those various dates in there. I think the, the more likely is that we're, we're building in 2024.
So I have a couple of questions. First is about the fundraising. So I, I don't know how, it was a couple slides back about your, so you have not begun that process.
We have not begun that process because we don't know what we're fundraising for.
So this is a genuine, because I, this is just a genuine question, because this is, there's a lot of different hands in this. So, and maybe you don't know the answer to this, but do you anticipate, or would it be possible to begin, say, with a pledge, not people actually giving you money, but to actually start soliciting pledges so that you have commitments? I mean, has that already begun?
That has, that hasn't yet begun.
Okay.
But yes, certainly that, I think that wouldn't be uncommon at all in the fundraising world.
Yeah.
I think the risk you run is that, you know, only a percent, only a certain percentage of pledges eventually turn into cash.
Understood, but, right, understood. But I know, I mean, I'm not a fundraiser, but I know that our community does have some pretty strong fundraisers in it, that there are people that have real knowledge about that. I had a second question, which is, when you were talking, you were sort of, just now, when you were, you were sort of saying, and then we will get the bids and we'll get the, but in reality, the turf committee at some point has to turn the direction over, right? In other words, at some point, I think someone mentioned it, the man, Anna might have mentioned the Ed Fund. At some point, the turf committee is going to act very much in the way that the Ed Fund acts, just in terms of, because we deal with the Ed Fund a lot, so we understand, like, that it really is going to be the turf, I'm just making sure I understand, at some point, the turf committee is going to give a, a donation for this specific project to the school committee, or to the school district, rather. Is that correct?
Some of this got hashed out in a, in a memorandum that got drafted two years ago, pre-COVID, post-COVID, I forget which. And I, I don't know how much of it survived, you know, how much of it will survive in terms of the way we work, but some of that was thought through in terms of, it'll be kept separate until we know this thing's going forward, then we'll turn it over.
Right, just because, like, obviously, the, the turf committee has done this tremendous amount of work, but the reality is, I don't know who I'm looking at, maybe Tom, the reality, that the turf committee can't manage the project, that's...
No, we would, we would receive other bids.
At the same time, it wouldn't be, I don't think it would be, I don't think it would be unusual to have a building committee that...
Right, exactly, exactly. That some members of the turf committee were, that makes total sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Anna?
I think organizationally, my understanding, based on that original MOA and the school committee, you know, all of these committees are advisory to the school committee, and I think it was, I think I remember you being taking a vote, you know, two years ago, we voted to create this new committee and appoint Michelle and all that. So I think to your point, everything eventually comes back to us as the final overseer, but I think your point is, you know, having community buy in input. And I remember when we talked about convening the group, getting the sports leagues involved, and, you know, credit to Mr. Fazio, who I know is involved with multiple sports, and there are lots of people on that committee. One other financial question, though, I just want to bring back to the front. My recollection is that the donation or the sale of the patent homestead did not not introduce $500,000 into the coffer for potential field project. Would that fall under the category of the state and local grants of the 1.2 to 2 million target? So we already sort of have $500,000 banked because of the patent homestead sale?
So we were, we, we, we decided that we, on the fundraising side, it would really, it would be really nice to be able to say, we've already got 500,000 raised. So we had put it originally in that bucket. That, that money is a little bit complicated because it needs to be matched by a Wenham component. When it was, when it, when it was accepted by the town and put aside for, you know, athletic field improvements by Hamilton, part of the, part of the, part of the vote was that it would need to be matched by Wenham. So there's a, it's a fair, that's a somewhat...
It's sort of there, but sort of not there. Well, and one other thing, too, I'll just say this publicly, because I know that people talk about it all the time, saying, oh, you can't use that money for turf fields. It's really important, I'm glad that you put the, the schematic project. Sure, maybe you can't use that money for the turf field, but there's almost $13 million of other things that are not necessarily the turf field. So I think when people, I'm just sort of trying to get ahead of the pushback that will happen when you say you can't use that money for this. You can use it for other things as part of the project. I just don't think you can, you, you know, do you understand, like, I, I just want to get ahead of that a little, because I know that's been a criticism of this.
And that, that may very well be with the, that particular money, I, I don't know, but that issue has come up with the CPC funds. And yes, I mean, the, the, the general piece is that you, CPC funds are limited to certain things, not necessarily buying, has been described like the actual turf rug that goes on top.
Correct, right.
But all of the other land work and things like that...
The tennis courts, other things.
Very expensive, a lot of that is, to my knowledge, acceptable.
That is also, I'm just affirming, I think that is my knowledge, so for the public that's watching this later, just bear in mind, there are other components besides the actual turf, the turf surface that's going on the field, so.
Anna, I don't believe there's any restriction on the Hamilton, on the patent fund money that would restrict how it's used. It was fairly generally for athletic field improvements.
That's what I thought, so, so look, we already have, if we can figure out how to unlock it from the coffers, we have half a million dollars somewhere, so.
So I guess, just in the interest of time, I'm not quite sure what exactly we, you are looking for from us this evening, or what we need to do this evening in order to move forward. I, I'm not quite sure.
Well, I'll offer my two cents. I think we need direction that, yes, you know, a $13 million project is financially feasible, given all the other things that are going on, and that that's the direction we should continue to move. And in that case, you know, we're, we're relying on you guys to say, we can, we can work this, you know, within our budget, that kind of thing, or, I don't mean to say necessarily within your budget, but we need, we need to know that it's financially feasible, and that's, and that you want us to go in a one-phase direction. And I think that's, am I wrong? Is there anything more we need?
I think that's right.
So I, I, I just want to bring up that, you know, this particular plan, which is fantastic, and much more robust than the last plan that came through, is actually not that much more than the high end of the last plan, and you're getting a lot more out of this. And I know I have heard nothing, but where is this project for the past five years or so? Excuse me. I do think that linking it in together with some other school projects is really important for a couple of reasons, right? One, we want to be looking at a total town facilities upgrade, right, which this represents, even though it's technically on the campus of two of our, only two of our schools, it actually, you know, as they really did a great job tonight pointing out, has a good trickle-down effect throughout the community. The other point is that when, you know, if we do move this forward, which I believe we should move this forward tonight, name it, right, own it, and give these guys our blessing to start that process, then we send out the big dogs over there in the corner to go start drumming up support from the community. And then come the spring, right, we're going to have the people we need in the tents to put together the vote to get everything done, right? The, like, the price tag is not going to get any better. This, the, the, the one thing I love about this, and that I even spoke about before, even in addition to the elementary school project, is as we're moving forward that elementary school project, we're not going to see a building for 10, you know, the better part of 10 years. Theoretically, I mean, not impossible, but like, you know, theoretically, you can start seeing these fields as, as soon as next summer. You know, you're, this is going to be very tangible, very quick, you know, once the money's actually sort of allocated. You know, again, that's a very, the, the sooner part of the timeline, but this will happen way faster than everything else, and it's going to be a much better sort of sentiment for the community as they're actually seeing what they're getting for their tax, you know, for change. You're actually really legitimately getting a tangible return on, on an investment. And, you know, we've all, I think everyone in this room has, you know, been to towns like Lynn Field and seen these other towns, and like, why do we have this in Hamilton One, and, you know, we can be that envy of those towns, you know, of those towns in 18 months. So you know where my vote is.
Yeah, well, no, and I, thank you, and I, I mean, and I, that's help, that was helpful, and I agree, and I am also in support. However, my, my real logistical question is, I really am not quite certain what it is that we can actually vote on. I mean, in other words, and maybe Eric might, like, in other words, are we voting on that we, the committee, would like to support Eric's general timeline of bringing this to town meeting next April, and that that's what we're voting on? Because we, in my view, we can't really vote and say, oh, yes, this is the project. We, we're not, I mean, we're not in a position to, but, so I'm not sure what you're looking for.
If the minutes could reflect that the board supported, you know, conceptually supported the, the approach that's been presented this evening, I think that gives us what we need.
But that, that was really my question, is like, is that what you're looking for? That's something that's just a, like, the board is in support and we might, I'm putting forward that we might want to say that the board's intent potentially is to bring this to the April town meeting.
We, we want to name it and own it tonight. We don't need to sort of...
Well, I wouldn't be comfortable voting, saying 100% we commit to the eight and a half million. I would not be comfortable with that.
We, we wouldn't, we're not committing to it.
That would be something that has to go through the town anyway.
I'm committed to the approach.
Right, okay.
If I may, it sounds as though what the committee, it sounds as though the will of the committee, if I'm listening to everybody mostly, we haven't heard from the side of the table very much, but we're just looking for conceptual support, that we want to support a project of this scope as a one-phase project, that we're willing to push it forward to town meeting as soon as is reasonably possible, with the timing direction from the superintendent and Mr. Gary and Vinnie to make it feasible, sort of defer to our professional experts. But what it sounds like everyone is looking for is, is this committee tonight willing to say, we want to move forward with the turf field project at this scope, at this time, and we want to push forward? And I think that's what David is saying about owning it, is not deferring it to some other thing, like, do we want to go forward or not? I think what you're looking for, and I, I agree with David 100%, I want this too. I think we need to say, yes, this committee is willing to support this approach, this prospective timeline, and we will defer to our experts in the room about making it financially feasible and bringing it forward to town meeting, et cetera, et cetera.
Can I just add one more thing, David?
Okay, and then I've got David Frankel, too.
I apologize. I just want to say, I really like the idea of just move back of sort of renaming this and actually reowning it as the Athletic Facilities Improvement Project. I think it makes, it just shows the size of the project.
Yeah, I think we would do, we would do well to lose the word turf, I think.
Exactly.
Well, I think it would conform to the goals that we already have, so, agree. It meets our goals, yeah.
David, thank you for your patience.
I love the whole project idea and, and I fully support it, but, but what I do think we need to do is the budget and analysis, what, what, what's the likely terms of the bond, what would its annual impact be on, on the budget, and what else do we have to squeeze together to actually get it through? So, well, in principle, we don't know the numbers.
And I, and I wonder if, and that was sort of my, right, and I wonder if that's part of us doing that, ta, tasking, you know, the district with those questions, is moving it forward, right?
Yeah, just put it on, you would just ask me to do it.
So I think that's a logical next step. If we all agree in principle that this is a great idea, which I totally agree, but now we've got to work out, how do we make that work without driving the select committees crazy on us?
Right, and that's part of, I, I mean, I like that, and that's part of moving it forward, is saying, like, we're going to, by doing that, it becomes more in the public eye and it moves things forward. It might help fundraising even, like, it gets, starts to talk. Eric, did you have something?
I, I was going to say, I just want to double check. It's Thursday, I believe.
It is.
Next Thursday, I believe. This is part of a conversation I have with the town manager, town administrator, so that we can go back to select boards and fin coms. Ultimately, the, they're going to drive the numbers. We can, we can pull numbers from the state, the state databases, and they have tool calculators for each community on the state website. The, the reality is looking at all of it, because it's hard to drop a number on an elementary school right now. You can't just say, oh, it's worth X millions of dollars. So I, I need to just figure out how to take the, the concept and make it realistic in a number sense so that we're not shortchanging ourselves or having to go back to the town and say, we need a little bit more. I don't want to do that. I want to be able to put it all in a straightforward format so that we can say, yes, we're doing this athletic facilities improvement project, we're pursuing a school and pursuing a roof, and these are the, the costs for it. It's, it's, it's time and it's doable, and realistically, the committee, I would suggest just direct me to pursue that, and I can, I can manage the rest with my team at the district office.
Okay. So does anyone feel like they could make a motion from that?
I do, I think I have an idea.
All right.
Anna, do you want to know?
Let's hear it, Anna. And everyone take a pause after Anna speaks before we second it, so, yeah. Okay, go ahead, Anna.
Okay, be gentle, this isn't quite right, first effort. I move that the Hamilton Wenham Regional School Committee authorize the superintendent and the Athletic Facility Improvement Project Committee to pursue the plan as presented in tonight's exhibit, with the expectation that we will bring forth a completed plan, permitted, and a funding proposal to public meeting as soon as reasonably possible.
It's only committing...
Can we add an intermediate step?
I authorize the superintendent to.
Yeah, I was going to say that, because that's only committing to bringing the plan, a more robust plan to a meeting. So I think that's...
That's all we're committing to.
I know.
I know, but that's what I'm saying, I'm sort of clarifying.
Yeah, yeah.
Not overly, so everyone, it's not overly binding.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yep.
Just to pursue that they continue authorizing.
All right.
As long as the budget numbers don't bypass the school committee, like, I don't want this to go directly to town meeting.
We don't have a second yet, so we really just, yep, all right.
Second.
All right, second by David Palito. Okay, Jen, go ahead.
That's actually why, really the reason I paused, like, do I second first, then?
Jen, go ahead.
Like I said, I just wanted to come back to us before we send it, I think it has to, yeah.
Does that, that, did that feel like it met your needs?
I was sort of saying to authorize them to pursue bringing this to public meeting as, as soon as reasonably possible, but we'd always get a chance to vote on the warrant and the language.
And I would anticipate that the superintendent would be updating us on the progress. Yeah.
This should be very much part of our agenda.
And realistically, just like any other town meeting, we have to come back to you for approval of the, the actual article, whatever, whatever it may be, whatever we want to get on the warrant. So it's, it's got to come back at some point before it heads to town meeting.
We're probably looking at four or five pretty large steps that we need to all agree on before that even gets to that point, so...
And I think if I remember what I said right, because I only wrote down half of it, it's to pursue the feasibility of bringing this forward as soon as possible, so it's, I, I think there's, yeah. Does that work for you guys?
Yes, thank you.
All right, are we ready to vote? Okay, all those in favor? And that is unanimous, and the motion passes. And you can spread the word that the school committee wants you, keep going.
Thank you, everybody, appreciate your time on this.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you to the Athletic Facility Improvement Project Committee.
Okay, excellent.
Moving right along?
All right, moving along, okay. That's to you, Eric, the draft district goals.
Thank you very much.
Did she leave?
I put this, I put a memo on top of these goals purposefully, so that...
Michelle Horgan needs to come back.
It could be very explicit in the direction that we would like to go, and I think, for the benefit of everybody, just looking at all of the pieces of the puzzle right now, the superintendent's entry plan, the district goals report, the upcoming equity audit, the NIOSC accreditation report, we have a mountain of information, and if you, if you're paying attention, that seems to now connect, I used the word dovetail last meeting, things are dovetailing fairly well with this information, so what I've asked the leadership team to do is put together some draft goals, but also really think clearly and carefully about the, the work that we're putting on our teaching staff. It was clear in, in the information I received from them this year, that there was initiative overload was real, and I've continued to talk to teachers even to this day, and try to get information about how they're feeling, how they're, how they're, you know, what they're thinking about the future, and realistically, they're thinking about next Wednesday and shutting off, and that, that, you know, our, our teachers are burnt right now, and I think it's important for us to really hone in on what is important for us now. So, these draft goals are very drafty, if you will, and realistically, just to start the ball rolling, I'm going to start the ball rolling tonight, and I want you to look forward and give me the opportunity to be able to stitch this together over a number of, of meetings, so tonight is just really, here's, here's what we're starting with, and keeping in mind that these goals will evolve and change over the next three months, actually two months now, but really looking to take advantage of a leadership team retreat in June, on the 28th, where we will continue the work we're already doing, kind of behind the scenes on action steps, deliverables, and cleaning up our goals, so that they actually are considered smart goals, so that we have some targets. So that work's actually going on in the background right now, but we just wanted to bring kind of basic goals forward. So taking advantage of the June 28th leadership team meeting, taking advantage of the two other, I have split the leadership team into two elementary and secondary groups. For August, early August, I'll be doing meetings with each of those groups for the entire day. A huge chunk of that day will be focused on these particular goals for their goal levels. And then the fourth piece of it is the school committee retreat. I think it's an important part of this process, so that we can get direction and some clarity from the committee as we, as we move forward, so that on August 17th, when we have the, it's August 17th, I don't know why that's not jumping out, but our next meeting in August, we will be able to have a clear and concise set of goals moving forward. So that's, it's kind of the process of, of where we are right now, and like, the ball's just starting to roll, and if you take a look at the, the goals, the first one is, is really all about strategic planning, and there is, there is a lot to that, there are a lot of pieces to it, and it's a good opportunity for us to begin to formalize all these documents that we have, take advantage of the information we're getting, integrate it into, into a, a greater plan, kind of an overarching plan for the entire district, and then determining timeline, is it three years, is it four years, is it five years, what does that look like over that timeline? And I think it's important to note that the, the goal, we have, we've contracted with TLA, Teaching Learning Associates, which is a local agency of retired superintendents that just works on strategic planning, helping kind of guide the way, so they'll work with us, they're meeting with us on the 28th, to, to give us an overview of, here's the process, and here's the data collection process. So on top of the big documents that I just mentioned, there are a whole bunch of little documents that we need to go find and bring together and, and look at, that includes the mission, the vision, and our, what we don't have now is core values, so part, parts and pieces of this as it grows will get us in this mode of reviewing, updating, and making sure that we really believe what we say. And, you know, the equity audit will help with that, the superintendent's report will help with that, I think there's, there's a lot of pieces of the puzzle. The second goal, MTSS structures, this is a long-term goal, we've been saying it since the start, we've got a good head start on it, we've been able to identify the pieces at the middle school level now to formalize, like the elementary did, so that we can now carry that data process into sixth and seventh and eighth grade. It's, there's, the pieces that are there are useful to us to use as data points, and as I said a couple of weeks ago, Panorama and some of these other softwares that we're looking at will give us the opportunity to, to aggregate and disaggregate that data, so that we can look at it realistically and not waste time digging through it or, or entering numbers. It becomes a much more sophisticated system that we can use to meet the needs of our kids. Intertwined in that MTSS is the social-emotional piece, and I think it's important to know that that is, is also kind of one of those strands of rope, if you will, if you can imagine the DEIB, the, the socio-emotional piece, the MTSS structures and supports in the classroom for learning, all of those kind of twist together, so that we can better respond to kids' needs, so that, that process will continue on. And then DEIB, I don't think we need any, any discussion about that, we know what we have to do, there's a lot of work to be done there, I think the, the tricky part will be deciding what to do first. We are not going to be able to eat the alligator all at once, so we will, we'll have to trust the committee, the DEIB committee, right now, to, to look at some of that and break it down for us, and then make some suggestions to the committee. So that work will be ongoing, and then improving learning environments, and, and that, you know, we just, we just had the, the best segue ever to, to roll into that, as much as we're, we're talking about athletic fields, those are fields we use for classrooms, too. So I think it's important to, to note that that project impacts not only athletics, but our classes at our high school and our middle school. It gives kids opportunities that they wouldn't, wouldn't otherwise have. Accreditation report will buttress this, I'm sure, to, to, to say, you know, these are things that need to be done, and allow us to be able to use that as leverage as we move forward in looking for financing options or even support within, within the communities. So we're really looking at those four goals, so that we can do this well, and, and also do it without overwhelming our staff. I really want the staff to focus on what's going on in the classroom, and not have to worry about, I gotta go do this today, and the next one's, I gotta go do this, and the next one's, I gotta do something else, and that tends to be what happens in schools, because you have this finite timeline of, you know, one to 180 days, boom, go. And I think it's, it's important for us to manage that a little bit differently for our staff next year. We took on a huge, huge order with our goals this past year, and, you know, we had to move some things around, and, and, you know, I think, I think that everybody did everything they could to get everything done, but in this case, I think this is also manageable, doable, and sets the stage for our future, for our future growth along, probably the next five years.
All right, questions?
Oh, my question is, we, we're going to be creating these maybe in more detail at the retreat, correct, or giving more detailed feedback?
Well, I think first, the leadership team is going to do, before we see them, the leadership team is going to work through these and flesh them out a little bit, and then we'll see them at the retreat.
So similar to last year's goal, we started working on actions and deliverables. We did not want to put that out there yet, it's just really not time, because we want to see the equity audit, like, the whole equity audit and see, okay, how can we create some actions and deliverables that meet those priority needs? So it's a, it's a, a little bit of a tricky balance, but I think the, the bigger piece of it is having all the information in hand, so they, they are working on it, I did share it with Dana yesterday, we meet on, on Wednesdays, and she was able to get a quick glimpse about what the team's working on, and it is just like this big, so we need to really hone in on reality, so that nobody gets blown out of the water either.
I think it's a great direction, so thank you.
David Frankel?
Yeah, as input into the, the town master plans, which hopefully will be some, somehow brought together...
Can you talk right into the mic?
Yeah, sorry, the, as input into the master plans, it would be helpful to have an ideal projected long-term plan, not necessarily one that you think right now could be pragmatically funded, but unless they know what you think the ideal is, they don't know how much of a gap there is that they're going to try and fill with other sources of, of revenue. And so it's sort of an envelope. The ideal would be here, what turns out to be pragmatic might be here, but, but that gap would help them to, because it's such a big percentage of the town budgets, help them to define what kind of revenue, additional revenue goals they, they should shoot for without blowing through the two and a half percent override and all that sort of stuff.
Yeah, I think, I think it's important to, to keep the relationships, like, that's been really my number-one goal with the towns, is to continue to meet with them, I was at Wenham Select Board a couple of weeks ago, just really continuing those conversations about, this is really coming, this is real, and then, same with the communities, but then as you, you'll see in Tom's report later, he has the multi-year projection about some of those costs as they go, that, that aren't even included in Goal Four, they're just things that need to be done along the way to run a school system, so I think, you know, it's important to be able to, to manage that. I know Hamilton has a tool that they tout, I don't, I have never seen it, but they have a tool that they plan to use in their master planning project that...
A model.
Yeah, it's a modeling tool that, that they, they plan to use, and I think part of, a huge part of that is going to be the realities of what's happening within the schools. So you're, yeah, you're right, it's, and it's just really working with the, the town managers, town administrators, meeting with the select boards and fincoms and...
Yeah, I was just really trying to encourage you to not be inhibited in defining what you think is ideal.
Yeah.
This is what you think is pragmatic, and, and let them kind of stretch.
Of course, of course.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Yeah, I, well, I just had a sort of a comment, excuse me, that I was thinking about, and, and really this idea of the teachers feeling overwhelmed by all these initiatives, right? I think that we really need to take that on ourselves as being a problem that, that starts here at this table, because realistically, as I'm looking at the goals from last year, and I'm looking at the goals from this year and the presentations we had tonight, we have to realize that we're actually, you know, these, these aren't four separate silos, right? We want to be realizing that we're more in a pyramid, and that I, I think at that top of the pyramid, you know, is really that idea of the equity, right? And, and making sure that every student in this district is getting, you know, the best education they can, you know, equitably, and everything else that we're putting in here is a tool to get there, right? So I think if we start thinking about that mindset, about what this ultimate goal is, right, this, this idea of a portrait of a graduate, right? You know, i- i- it's that everybody sort of comes out with that same robust education, that same positive experience from here, and what tools do we have, right? Strategic plans are, is a, is a tool, right? I mean, there's a process to actually create the strategic plan, but the strategic plan in itself is a tool that we're using to get to the ultimate goal. And I think at any time, if any of us at any level starts getting any sort of pushback, I think we owe it to our teachers especially, you know, but also our students and our community to make sure that we're taking a step back, as they say that, and looking to make sure that we're working towards one common goal, and we're not working in silos, right? And, and so, I don't know if we need to have four, you know, I, or if it needs to be one with four subsections, right? And, and I don't really care, it, it's more about sort of making sure that, that, that goal, you know, because then we're all working towards the same thing, we're all working towards one same thing, and we don't need to worry about, well, this, you know, this Wednesday we're doing this, this Wednesday we're doing this, like, this Wednesday, we're utilizing this tool to get here, next Wednesday, maybe we're going to be utilizing another tool, and that's all it is, right? We should be building up, we shouldn't be piling on, so that's just all I wanted to say.
Well said.
I think if I could add anything, I would say, continue to, you know, to visualize that rope, they really all bind together as one, as Dave was saying, like, this is one thing overall, it's just, we're twisting it together, and that rope will give us the strength, will give us the foundation, will give us that opportunity, those opportunities to move forward, and, and there, there are already things that will, that we do naturally that I think sometimes teachers think they're initiatives, but they're really just what we do, it's, it's part of our job, so as, as we, we start to look at that, we can sort those things out, too, like, this is really an initiative, and this is something we do as our job, like, assessment or...
But, but then we own that, because then we're not presenting it to them in the right way, right? And so, so I think that's where we have to sort of take that ownership, that it, you know, that falls on us, we want to make sure that we're giving them the toolbox, and that it's, that it is, they see it as a toolbox, and they don't see it as another box, they have to check, or something else they have to do, or the ones they have to do instead of going home and taking a nap. That's what I do.
All right, Jen?
This is more of a comment than a question. In Goal Two A, line three, where it says, elementary level by building and strengthening a cohesive, multi-tiered system of support, I think we should add monitoring there. Like, we need to make sure that that is working, because otherwise, we need to figure out what's not. So, I would just add monitoring in there.
Okay, anybody else? All right?
No.
Thank you. Okay, are we ready? Okay, next up, we have the superintendent evaluation. I all sent all of you, I had to put the watermark on it, I felt it was really important to put that, so that everyone knew it was a draft, but I did send you all a clean copy, so that you didn't have to be trying to see around that watermark. So, I am open to, well, first of all, I'd like to say, Michelle Horgan is joining us for this portion. So, yeah, why don't you have a seat, I don't know.
She's back.
She's back, and she's back!
Oh, and she's back where she usually sits.
Exactly, there you are. Okay, so, first of all, I want to thank everybody for all of the work that you did on this, and I've thought a lot about this, because as you've all read the composite, it's fairly long, I, and I know that this meeting is fairly long, at the same time, I've really thought a lot about this, I do think this is, you know, one... At the same time, I've really thought a lot about this. I do think this is, you know, one of the three things that we are tasked with doing. And I think it's really important that we spend a little bit of time really going through this and providing Eric and also the community with some feedback on, on this report. So what I'd like to do, and I will take, you know, direction from the penny, but what I'd like to do is I'd like to just read the notes and methodology out loud so that that's clear. And then what I'd like to do is go through the four, I don't know how you all did it, but I, when I did mine, I then went to the four standards and went through each of the standards. So I'd like to start off by doing that and then we'll kind of go from there. Is everyone comfortable with me just reading the methodology? And then you can, and then we can ask any questions or comments. Okay, on March third, 2022, the school committee agreed that all current members would be invited to participate in the superintendent evaluation process. Those members who departed the committee on April seventh were asked to submit their evaluations on or before their departure. New members who were elected on April seventh were not eligible to submit evaluations. And six evaluations were submitted. Dana Alara, Julia Campbell, Jennifer Carr, Michelle Horgan, David Polito, and Anna Seizic. When evaluators differed on their ratings, the compiler calculated the median, mode, and mean rating for that item. When all three measures aligned, that score was reported. When there was a difference between the three measures or when a rating fell between two categories, the compiler evaluated the scatter of ratings and the written responses to select the rating that best represented the group. You'll see later on, I did explain that on, in a couple of places. I did also want to just note that as a new superintendent, it's typical to have a professional practice goal of full participation in the new superintendent induction program. When setting the goals, the committee gave Mr. Tracy feedback that while it was expected that he complete this program, the committee did not feel that it needed to be included as a formal goal. Nevertheless, some members noted that Mr. Tracy had participated actively in the program and used the supports of his coach effectively. I added that very specifically because if you look at the very top of the page one, there are, there is a place to put professional practice goals. And Eric actually did not officially have a professional, professional practice goals, but a couple of people checked it off anyway and a couple of people commented on it anyway. So you'll note that I did not check it off because it wasn't formally, but that was. All right, did anyone have any questions about the methodology or what I just? Okay, so what I'd like to do is move down to standard one. Okay, which is instructional leadership. And I'd like to really focus on the, we-
Dana, don't we have to read the whole evaluation into the public record?
Well, this is gonna be my question, is that I'm willing to read it. I've actually timed it. Reading it straight takes fifteen minutes.
I just didn't know if we had to.
Michelle Bailey read it?
That is the, at the will of the committee. So I, if, as I was gonna look at the narrative, I'm happy to read it. I don't think we have to read it. It is entered into, but- Right.
I agree with Jen. I think it's available to the public. I do not feel the need for you to read it into the record personally.
Like I said, I read it to myself at home. Took fifteen minutes. Was fascinating after having written it myself. I do want to just comment that unlike any other writing that anyone does, the goal of this document is that it ought to be filled with things that feel like plagiarism to you. You ought to, I'm hoping, see some of your words, some of your quotes in here. I hope that that feels true because that was what I intended to do. So if we don't really want me to read the whole entire thing here, if that is the feedback that I am getting, I will just start with instructional leadership and I will say that you can see that, well, maybe I'll just put it out there to you all to talk about standard one. If anyone has any additional comments about either the, where the check marks are, which all fall in this particular category, all fell into the proficient range, or if anyone had any questions or comments on this standard, and you could direct them directly to Eric if you wanted to provide feedback or to me if you have concerns about the composite. You're kind of disappointing me. I spent a lot of time reading it out loud.
You did such a good job that we don't have any questions or concerns.
Okay, excellent.
For me, I'm just speaking for me, but-
Well, on standard one at least. All right. Standard two, which is management and operations. And again, I will say this, again, all, all the check marks fell into the, overall into the proficient range. I, again, comments?
I'll just make this general comment about both of the first two standards and kind of overall. I, I definitely see myself in this, but what I can also tell is that other people wrote similar things in slightly different words. And like, well, that's the same idea, but that's, I actually went back to my own to be like, did I write that? It's like, I didn't write that, but someone else in the committee clearly did and had a similar idea. So I'm sort of struck by the consistency of it. And I hope that Eric, you see this as a positive, that, you know, this is a group that tends to have spicy conversations. So for us to actually be kind of like, mhm, he's doing great. We don't have any problem. I, I hope you see that as-
I absolutely do. Thank you.
That's a, a real testament. But I love reading my own thoughts from someone else's words, so.
Yes, I will say that was very, that was very true throughout. I did see similar thoughts in different wording. And, and also, you know, it's, sometimes voice is difficult. We all have very different voices. So sometimes it's in a, it's not a direct quote. Sometimes it's a mush of two or three people saying the same thing. All right, other comments on, on, on the management and operations? All right, standard three, family and community. This, as you will see, is a, is a theme that I did highlight in the, in, in the beginning part where that communication was certainly a theme throughout. And it came up certainly, interestingly, some, some of us chose to highlight that communication that was seen as a strength by all evaluators. Some of us chose to highlight it under standard three and family and community, and other people chose to highlight it more so under professional culture. But, and some chose to do that under both. But it was something that everyone mentioned. So are there other things that people want to highlight about family and community or questions? Okay, then.
This is not a reflection on your hard work.
No.
We just all agree with you.
Just if you could know the amount of like angst.
I know, you quoted every, we all feel heard and seen. I think I would like to make a comment on this point, just because we know from Dorothy and coaching that the reading of exemplary really isn't something to give out lightly.
Right.
So I think it's noteworthy that so many of us, despite hearing Dorothy in our ear, say, you really shouldn't give someone an E unless they've really, really gone above beyond. And I think it's really noteworthy that Superintendent Tracy has been on the job for eight months and yet enough people in this committee who have a seri-, you know, especially considering how difficult the last few years have been. I think it's an amazing credit to you, Eric, that so many people gave you an E in this area because I think some superintendents go their whole careers without ever earning that. And here you've already done it in the first year. So you're setting yourself a very high bar. But I think it's really worth noting that we knew not to give someone an exemplary relating, rating lightly. And yet we chose to do it anyway. And I think you should see that as a huge public statement of your strength as a communicator, which everyone in the community across the board, every, there, there is one theme that I hear. It is, we love how he communicates, the depth, the complexity, the sophistication, the intelligence, the grammar, all of it. People love the way you speak and write. And it's made a huge difference in this district.
I will, I will just note that, to that feedback, that, that almost everyone specifically cited the weekly superintendent reports. I think I wrote in here, and I don't even remember which one of you actually said, like, he's a good storyteller, but it was a theme throughout. Lots of people told that, said that in different ways. And that that was an important aspect. It isn't just that the report is clear and timely and has the information that we need, which would probably be fine, but in addition, that people, it was fun to read and that that was important to people. That that was the feedback that I got from. Okay. Other people? Yep.
I would just like to say that I really think one of the things Superintendent Tracy has done exceptionally well is to rebuild trust in between stakeholders in the community. Because it was pretty much at an all-time low. And to repair those bonds as quickly as he did is amazing. I mean, it just really is.
So I do want to look at standard four, professional culture. Again, like I said, that it's, it's the communication again was really highlighted there as well as other things, but that was a highlight. Anyone have any else, thing else to add on that? Okay. All right, then if you are willing, then I'd like to go up back to the top. And if you see, I did explain, so on some of the, I'll just quickly go through the, the goals, the superintendent performance goals. So some of these, you know, I don't know if anyone, if everyone read and appreciated that some of these did require me to make a decision as the come, you know, and I'm willing, I'm open to draft. So I will say, so I do want to just read a little bit here. So the multi-tiered system of support, the ratings on this goal varied from significant progress, three people picked that, to met, which was two, and exceeded was one. And so, well, I'll just say, I wrote, while the scatter makes it unclear or best to check, to place the check mark, the narratives were all positive about the amount and quality of the achievement. And in my opinion, it really was that people made different interpretations on how best to convey, that they thought that there was a good deal of progress, but that it was a two-year goal. So, I mean, I made the decision to put it as met, indicating that none of the evaluators noted that there were any concerns about the amount of progress made during this year. I'm hoping that people feel comfortable with that, but I'm open to other things.
Yeah, I think that was, was just challenging because it's a two-year goal. So you can't specifically say this goal's been achieved, but there's work. This goal has been achieved in terms of there's work going forward on it.
Right. And, and like I said, when I really read people's narratives, that was, it didn't really appear to me that there was actually a lot of difference in terms of what people were trying to express. Their, just their check marks fell in different places.
Oh, and I want to make other, one more comment that the evidence provided was just exemplary. Like really helpful for us, for me personally, because I felt that there was so much to work with. And it was very detailed and very high level. So I think that really helped me personally grade and do the evaluation. So thank you.
Okay. All right, just to go through the rest of the goals, the maintaining momentum during transition. This one fell neatly into met. Improving communications and relationships, this was equally split, three to three. So I, this is what I, I'll just say, every evaluator, I just said that. Every single person really highlighted this. And the enthusiasm just came through. And then so I really tried, if forced to choose, I chose exceeded. Again, it was a fifty-fifty, so, you know. And then the future focus really was, I felt very, very similar in terms of the MTSS goal that the ratings did vary, but that the feedback really reflected. And this really was that the timeline of this goal did shift. So we were looking at the future focus goal as, as written at the beginning of the year and the timeline actually did shift. And those who note, those who commented on that expressed that they were pleased with the slowed-down timeline and felt that the timeline slowdown was a positive. So there was no real negative feedback about that. But again, some people chose to rate that as significant progress, whereas some people felt like that they, that it actually exceeded the progress that they would have anticipated on the goal. So I chose significant progress to acknowledge both that it was selected by the largest number of people and also to reflect that there are benchmarks still to be completed on this goal. Again, I'm open to feedback. Okay, all right. So just to wrap up that top, we're just looking at all those top check marks there. That for the overall standards, all of them, it was clear where to place that overall. Each standard gets one check mark and all of them, that was clear where to place it, which is that instructional leadership, management, and operations, and professional culture were all rated as proficient. And family and community engagement was rated as exemplary. Also, the overall summative performance was rated as proficient. This, there were four rankings of proficient and two of exemplary. So it was pretty clear to put the rating in proficient. And I do want to note that there were no overall summative performance ratings below proficient. And then finally, I will not read this to you, but I did, you've all mentioned it already. There were some themes that emerged. And these are just quotes that I pulled out, so hopefully you see yourself heard here. But some themes emerged, which is that there was a smooth entry in transition. The communication was a strength, relationship building, which I think Jen just mentioned. I wrote, "In conclusion, the school committee recognizes the work that Mr. Tracy has done in taking the reins after a turbulent three-year stretch in the district. The entry plan was ambitious and he lives his mantra of execute, execute, execute. His full engagement in the Hamilton-Wyndham Regional School District and his genuine caring for all its students has created a much-needed shift in the community. Superintendent Tracy has approached his new role in Hamilton-Wyndham with remarkable vigor and determination to move the district out of the difficult pandemic years and into a new era of growth, modernization, and stability." Okay, anybody have any more feedback for Eric? Please keep it up. Michelle Horgan?
Yes. Hi, everyone. I, just two things. I think you look at arrogance, he's almost, it's like if you look at a really tall five-year-old child, you're expecting to be a seven-year-old kid. And when he doesn't meet those expectations, you're like, oh, he's still five. You have to remember that Eric has only been in this position for eight months and that grace should still be given to him because he still has, as exceptional a job as he has done, he has so much more to learn. You have to remember that. I know I'm singing to the choir, but just keep that in mind. And secondly, if you guys don't nail him down this summer, you guys are stupid. Get on it. Don't hesitate. Just do it because otherwise, you know, sorry.
She's causing trouble.
So that's it. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Michelle. Oh, that's great. Okay, anybody else?
I have just one more thing to say. I didn't see it in the, the composite evaluation, but it's, it's probably in there, but I didn't see it. I think something that I commented on that I just really want to highlight is the fact that Eric has not passed the buck ever. It's very much like, this is on me, this is my responsibility, this is my decision, I'm being held accountable. And he doesn't shy away from really tough decisions. And I know that's something I really appreciate in a leader. And I think that's something that, that we can, you know, maybe everybody can learn from. But I just wanted to say that that's one of the, one of, I think, his biggest strengths. And I totally agree with Michelle.
I'd like to add on to that too, and I'll give you a really specific example from the last meeting where, because I wrote similar things. You have a real sense of personal responsibility. It's clear that even if it's not your fault, you embrace the idea that you're the leader of the district. So the people who work with you and for you, you're responsible for them too. So I, I don't ever actually foresee you saying, well, I'm not in charge of that. That was so-and-so's department. Because you recognize that ultimately you're in charge of the whole district and- in charge of the whole district, and I actually think we, as the committee, can learn from that as well. But I'll give you a specific example where, when Wendy was here talking about school lunch, and there was a moment where she asked a very logical question to, you know, in a normal supervisory capacity, like, oh, is it okay for me to present? Do you want to do that? And you, without even pausing, you're like, nope, you go right ahead. Like you, you have this really kind of charming blend of humility and empowerment for the people who work with you, when it's Tom's turn to speak, or Jen's turn to speak, or someone else's turn to speak. Vinnie is a great example, you know, you let people show their strengths and take credit for that, but you get the sense that you are right there for backup. And if somebody were to come after them, let's say that Vinnie, for some reason, was, I don't know, under attack from the auditors, which I'm just trying to think of the craziest example ever. But let's say Vinnie was under attack from the auditors, I don't ever see you saying like, well, you know, that's Vinnie's fault because Vinnie's the finance guy and I'm just over here. I feel like you would, you would protect him and take responsibility, but you also are empowering and yet humble. It, it's a really beautiful kind of blend of leadership that makes people feel comfortable being themselves. This is my impression, perhaps other people in the district disagree, but from my observations, you seem like you'd be a really great boss, and I think that's important. And I think the accountability piece that Julia was talking about is really huge, because people want that in their leadership. They want someone to say, I own this, but I'm here to help, and I'm being part of it, and we're working together. And I think you do that really effectively. And I think to Michelle's point, that's just who you are. I don't think that's going to ever change. I think that you are incapable of not being that way, in the same way I am incapable of not speaking long sentences all the time. But it's a beautiful talent, and I wish I had it.
Also, I'd like to say, I, I told Anna that hers was long, and mine was long, but in reality, it was Julia's that was long. And, and mine. And, and, and mine was long. Okay.
I used emojis.
Okay, other comments? Anything else? All right. So Michelle's going to go watch and see what the Celtics are doing. Thank you, Michelle. Thank you so much. So my understanding is that the new members can vote, correct?
They vote to accept, yeah.
We did not exclude them from voting to accept. So I'm going to ask Amy for you to make a motion.
Okay. I move that the Hamilton Wenham Regional School Committee accept the draft of the superintendent evaluation as presented this evening.
Second.
Okay, second by Jen Carr. All right, is there further discussion? Eric, do you have any further discussion?
I just want to say thank you, everyone. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
We will continue to get better.
And thank you so much, Dana, for all of your hard work.
You're welcome. It was time-consuming, but not hard. You guys did a great job. It was not hard. All right, are we ready to vote? Okay, all those in favor? All right, and that is unanimous, and the motion passes. Okay, and then I will figure out what I need to do with that document.
Quick point of order, do we have to move to extend the meeting? Because it's been almost three hours.
I was going to say that, but I thank you, appreciate that. Okay, so it is 10:00 PM, and I would like to just say that I did, I did warn you, but we do need to take a vote. So I would like, I guess I can move. I would like to move to extend the meeting for up to half an hour.
Second.
Second by Aniseetik. Is there any discussion?
Go hurry.
All those in favor? All right, that's unanimous, and the motion passes. Okay. Thank you all. All right, moving along, the custodial contract, that's either Eric or David.
Well, you did most of the work.
We voted David to be the chair now.
Go ahead, Eric.
Okay. We've been working on the custodial contract, I think, for almost this entire time I've been involved, maybe, actually beyond, before that, it started well before that. With Superintendent Baneos, so it carried over. We've changed some personnel along the way, we've changed negotiators, and it's, it's been kind of a...
Changed the table?
Yeah, we changed, yeah, we changed the table, we negotiate at, everything. So we finally were able to come together, we got, we got some language sorted out, which is in this red line document that you have in front of you. Most of it fairly straightforward, and, and stuff that was, was hammered out, again, before me, these, these were, some of the language changes were inherited from the initial rounds when they had first met with, asked me. So we picked it up from when I took over October 1st, and I, and then the original negotiating committee during my, during the fall, carried through as much as we could. It was hard to get asked me to the table, but we were able to finally hammer it out last, just a week ago. And this is, these are the numbers that you see reflected in the, the changes, I mean, reflected in the, the contract. A couple of the, the bigger items was really looking at how custodians were evaluated. They had this kind of complex evaluation system that was, could, we thinned it out. We worked with a smaller committee of, of the two groups and thinned it out, got it to something, excuse me, it was a little more reasonable and easier to, to manage for everybody. And then a lot of just language changes on how, when people were coming in, whether it was during a weather-based emergency or not a weather-based emergency. So some of the things we learned with snowstorms, and some of the things we learned with COVID, and then certain ways we handle when people get called back, for instance, how they get paid. Before this, this contract, when teacher, excuse me, when a custodian got called back, for instance, at the high school, the alarm goes off at 1:00 in the morning, there's a list of us that the alarm company calls, and whoever kind of is maybe not smart enough to answer the phone, but whoever answers the phone has to go in, generally Chris Stowe, because he's first on the list. So they would get paid for having to come in. We, we adjusted the language a little bit, where they would get paid to come in, and then if they got a call in another hour, they wouldn't get paid another increase in pay. So that's kind of how it worked previous, but we sorted that language out a little bit. And then really tried to just work some, some smaller things in, increasing their clothing allowance, that they, they, they go through clothes and sneakers like nobody's business, because they're cleaning and chemicals, and especially in the summertime, they'll go through sneakers and boots and things like that. So we were able to increase that incrementally over a three-year period, excuse me. And then a little bit of, of kind of clothing that we supply, we supply certain goods to them, and just when they got it is, was clarified in the contract, there's never anything, any timeline to say, it should be there at this time. Swapping out, rename, putting the proper name in, Washington's Birthday is not a thing, so we've, we changed that to President's Day. And then we were able to change our Good Friday for Juneteenth, similarly to the, the way we did it with the teacher contract. And then... Some of its language changed, it was old language in, in like Section 2200 evaluations, there was a, a line that was put in there as a placeholder to say, yeah, we'll agree on something by a particular date. We took those out because it never actually got agreed to, but we, we, we had sorted it out with the subcommittee. And then the, on the final pages, the incremental increases between 21 and 24, because this contract had lapsed a year ago, they'll, they, we, we will pay them for the past school year, this 21, 22 school year, for that 2% increase. It, it also reflects a market rate adjustment in that first year. And then we removed the maintenance working foreman pay, because we don't have one anymore, so we just took that all, completely out. A longevity, they were the only group that didn't have a longevity option, so we were able to add that in to the contract. And then an additional 2% for each of the following year, next year, and the year after, for increases. So that's kind of it in a nutshell. The union did ratify on Tuesday, I was notified by their representative that they, they did ratify their contract on Tuesday, and now it's in our hands to vote our side.
Okay. But do you have any questions?
Just a quick one. On page 22, should it be listed as Columbus Day or an indigenous peoples' day?
I actually believe in Massachusetts, it's, is it?
It's, yeah.
So here's, here's the situation, right?
I was asking our question, sorry.
No, that's, no, it's a good question. It, the situation is that they've already ratified it. And there is a... There's a lot of good reasons for us to try to ratify it in this fiscal year. That being said, you're correct.
Hey, you can do a quick sidebar letter July 1.
Yeah, we can, I would say on July 1, I can.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Right. I, I don't anticipate, I mean, in other words, there wasn't a lot of debate about Washington's Birthday being changed to the correct thing, correct name.
Oh, my God.
Especially since we joked about Washington's Birthday over and over.
We spent a lot of time in that section because we were going back and forth with Good Friday and that.
Anything else? Anybody have anything else?
Fresh eyes, everyone's going, I blame you.
I'll take the blame.
All right. All right, can we have a motion?
Yes, we, I move that the Hamilton Wenham Regional School Committee approve the 20, 2021 to 2024 custodial contract as presented this evening.
Second.
Second by Aniseetik. Is there further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? And that is unanimous, and the motion passes. Thank you all, and David will be busy writing the sidebar.
I'll take care of it.
Okay. All right. Now... Facilities. Tom, thank you so much for being here in the middle of the night.
Tom, do you want to present it? Okay, I thought it might be easier for you.
Sorry.
There you go.
Thank you for inviting me tonight to present the 2023 to 2028 facilities roadmap. It is, it was the main goal of, for the district, under our district goals displayed ahead. The overarching goal, you know, as stated on the board here, is that students, and I apologize for reading it, but I think it's important to lead off. So students in the Hamilton Wenham Regional School District will have access to learning environments that are safe, clean, and sustainable. District learning environment shall be a source of civic pride for the entire community. The district shall collaborate with both the towns of Hamilton and Wenham to plan significant capital investments effectively. And as you saw in the draft goals, we're looking at continuing that mantra. The deliverables will change, of course. So I want to lead off first by explaining the structure of the report, and I probably know it seems busy, but it does have meaning, right? First, I'll start by saying that I constructed the graphic and the thought process, almost like you would construct a building. So on the, at the bottom, you'll see the foundational work that was used to come up with the different ideas in this report. Of course, you have the 2022 State of the School Facilities Report that was presented back in March, the 2022 Portrait of a Graduate, which I was, you know, proud to participate in that process, and also the DEIB audit that was presented. So I think those are three main documents that should be used as we look at our facilities in the future. So the foundation being laid, I now have the structural columns within this graphic. Broken it down into four categories. That is renew, improve, reduce, and welcome. All of those, as symbolized on the graphic, are linked together, right? And finally, all of those columns hold up the overarching goal, right? So to get to that overarching goal, I feel like we have to look at these four structural columns. May sound a bit corny, but the reason why we have the DNA strips in there is because I think it is important to engrain that in our thought process as we're talking about these decisions. So first, on the renew column, as we all know, and we've talked about tonight, we have the athletic facilities improvement project on the horizon. So thank you again for your support with that. I was proud to work with the group all year. I look forward to advancing that work. Also talked about quite a bit is the Cutler School, or quote-unquote Cutler School MSBA project, where we are looking at incorporating the Winthrop into that. And third, as talked about, is the high school roof replacement project. Now, as I go through the categories on the right-hand side, which I will click at the end, just to give you an overview, is a link to the open spreadsheet, which I plan on keeping open as long as this plan, you know, between the dates of '23 and '28, so the public can get access to it and see how much investment we've made, any notes, and the completion rate of the projects. Very similar to what I did back in the, leading up to the fall of 2020 with the ventilation improvements. Made it open, people can access it and see the work being done. With the pros, with the prospect of the new school on the horizon, next category I named improve. So knowing the fact that the Cutler and Winthrop schools will likely be consolidated with a future project, I think we have to be mindful of large capital investments into the Cutler and the Winthrop schools. That's not to say we're going to be absentee landlords, that is not to say we're just going to let them fall apart. Anything that impacts the safety and impacts the learning environment, we will still have to take care of. You know, in addition to that, building code requirements, state law requirements, we all have to stay updated on that. The next category, I can, I came up with the title of reduce, and really the main focus is reducing the district's carbon footprint. I'm not sharing any news that climate change is, you know, the issue of our times. And I know that COVID kind of derailed that for a little bit as far as the district's concerned. We were making headway, we're talking about increasing composting and recycling and the things that we need to do. Aside from the waste management, it'd be wise for the district to look into renewable energies on our campuses, especially the middle school, high school, and Buick er School, if we reflect back on that improved slide. And as we presented to the Capital and Finance Subcommittee, is the prospect of performance contracting, and that may, you know, the renewable energies may fall under that performance contract. If it's wise for one of these performance contractors to take that on, then we might see that fall under that. And finally, welcome is the final category. You know, all students and all occupants, when they arrive to our buildings, should feel that they belong in the building. If somebody wanted to come to this meeting tonight, if you look outside, they would have to take an alternate route compared to the rest of the flow of the crowd that would come in here tonight. So I think long-term, we should be looking at the ADA requirements and other items, once the DEIB final audit is presented, may fall under that category as well. I want people to know that I consider this to be a living document. I don't want to come here and say this is what's going to happen in 2028. If I did that... If I did that in twenty-nineteen, instead promised what was going to happen in twenty-twenty, it would have been derailed, so, I think it's important to have a living document and also break out tasks that are achievable and not just, I hate to say pie in the sky, but I want it to be realistic of things that we can accomplish over the next five to six years. So if I click on the link, the spreadsheet is open right now. As you can see, we haven't reached fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, that's why there's no investment in that category. But as we move from fiscal year to fiscal year, you know, we'll see the investment in twenty-four and twenty-five and twenty-six, and then the total at the end of this, how much we've invested into these specific projects. There'll also be remarks for each fiscal year. So for example, at the end of twenty-three, you'll see the room, the amount of rooms, um, you know, that had a special, a specialist tile removal and replacement. And the amount of doors, that'll be listed in those remarks. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, I'm happy to take any feedback that you may have regarding, uh, the way I've structured this. And I look forward to working with the committee through some of these projects through the budget process.
Thank you. All right, Julia's chomping at the bit, she wants to go.
I just have a comment, I love this. I, well, I love a good framework, so, I love the four categories, I think it's really easy to understand and digest. And that when we are evaluating a new proj, project, we can say, oh, it fits into one of these four, and if it doesn't, then we won't do it. So, um, for me, this is really helpful and I think really comprehensive, so, thank you, I don't really have a question, but I appreciate the synthesis of it.
Excellent. Are there questions or comments? David?
Sure, yeah, I like the structure too. And my only question is, under improve, I didn't see anything specifically called up for improving indoor air quality.
Sure, uh, let me just pull that up. So under the middle school, high school, and Buiker School, um, you know, in the past, it's air quality, or indoor air quality, IAQ has been the term, right?
Yep.
I put in, indoor environmental quality because it goes beyond just analyzing ventilation, it's also, um, cleaning chemicals that are used, uh, furniture that's purchased, and the off-gassing from the plastic. So I think that, looking at that in a holistic way, um, I did carry that on the schedule of, um.
I just didn't see that, that was, it just maybe categorized somehow differently, but.
Yeah, I have it in the slides here, and then, um, I have, I think I might have it labeled as HVAC only because that was, I didn't make that change on the spreadsheet yet.
Fair enough, yeah, it goes beyond HVAC too, as you know.
Yep, so, it is, um, part of the plan, and, uh, hopefully, we can work it into the budget.
Cool, yeah, that's important.
Okay, Amy, did you have something?
Yeah, um, thank you for this. I love, like everyone else is saying, the breakdown of the four categories. Um, I'm also happy to hear you specifically call out that we're not going to neglect Cutler and Winthrop because, you know, our youngest learners there now are going to be there for their probably whole and elementary careers, so we need to still maintain those schools, so thank you for pointing that out. Along the lines of the reduce category, I think this work is really important, and I'm wondering if there's a way to align this with educational initiatives? You know, I'm sure a lot of the students would be interested in some of these initiatives. I know one of the schools had an initiative to do composting, and I'm wondering if that's something we could open up to the teachers as part of, um, curriculum?
Yeah, I would, I would welcome that. Um, these are hard tasks to take on just as the facilities team or just the administration. And I'm looking for everybody's support in the district. And one, one comment I can make, when, if I take Cutler School, for example, and the fact that we're not just going to neglect it, uh, past few months, I've been working with the Friends of Cutler, uh, to look at some additional playground equipment. And I go back to, you know, the structure when we're, you know, having decision-making sessions. Knowing that a new school is on the horizon, playground equipment usually fifteen-to-twenty-year lifespan, so we were specifically looking at pieces that could be moved, right? So, climbing structures and jungle gyms are typically not structures that you would move. The insurance companies don't typically like that. But we did look at musical elements and, um, other playground elements that could be moved to either the new school or maybe another property in town. Depending on what we're looking at at the new school, so.
That's great.
I just want to give people confidence that we're not just going to look cast off the Cutler and the Winthrop school.
Eric, did you have something?
Yeah, I think to Amy's point, the, the reality is that it's imperative for us to build this again into that rope, because if you, what Tom's been able to do here is actually fit the dovetail with the, the work that we're currently doing and, and carry that through. But also getting kids involved as part of that, the overall structure of all we're going to do, we're going to get kids involved in the MTSS stuff, we're going to get kids involved in the DEIB stuff, we're going to get kids involved. We have kids involved now in the recycling, they do, um, like the high school, the Environmental Club, and the National Honor Society groups, uh, do a lot with that. So more, it's more now, can we carry that into some of the other schools and, and get, I mean, you can, you can really get groups of fourth and fifth graders to take charge of something, so. It's just really, uh, it goes, it goes all the way back to goal one for next year, as we set those goals, and as we look at who we want to be and why, you know, who we serve, who we want to be, and why we do what we do. Those core values that we don't have now to make these decisions are, are, are becoming a little more evident, I think, to people as, as we build forward. So by the time we hit December, we have these core values that we now start to decision-make with, we also start to use in our planning and our budgeting, and, and, and also, that, that goes into curriculum and into the opportunities for people in our district, both adults and, and students.
That's great, thank you.
Okay. Well, I, I'd like to just say that I was so happy with this, this. I mean, the content is important, and, and I'm, I really appreciate the link because that was a helpful document before, and I like having it. But this, right in front of us, this makes me so happy, like, that you have, because this is the way, this is to what David was pointing at earlier in the meeting, that, this, this shows, like, all of the things working together, right? That this foundation that you've put at the bottom, like, this is the way everything in the district should be filtered through. How are we serving the students using this, you know, this framework? And so it's a model for the way I imagine that all the other, um, you know, departments or whatever can be looking at. So I'm really, I was really excited to see this, and thank you for presenting it in that way, and I can see that it probably took a long time to really integrate this all into something that was, um, really coherent and, um, and I think,
Thank you.
like you said, it, it's flexible enough to allow you to go into the future, so thank you for that.
Thank you for the kind words.
Anybody else? Thank you, and thank you for being here so late. I am grateful.
What did you use to build it?
Uh, Canva.
Canva.
Yeah.
I do just want to give you a shout-out, the, the visualize it, it was great. The combination, though, of the double helix moving and then the neon structure does give you a little bit of like a dance party feel, like, it feels really fun and playful, despite being something really serious. The only comment I would make, sort of picking up on that, is it's so easy to process, but you've also imbued a little bit of the district values in it, when you start talking about strategic planning and visioning. I mean, you've used words of inclusivity and climate change and welcoming and sustainability, and, um, you know, you're, in a very, um, deft sort of way, you're, you're showing sort of philosophical underpinnings of how you're approaching the management of the buildings, which I really appreciate and applaud and support, and, yeah, you've got some design skills, my friend, so if you don't want to continue being a facilities director, I feel like.
I only know enough to be a little dangerous, so that's.
I, I didn't anticipate that that was going to move, I didn't realize that.
Right, me too.
One of the disadvantages of the agenda being on paper.
That's right, there we go. All right, thank you.
Thank you for welcoming me.
Thank you. Okay. All right, Mr. Tracy, to the School Building Committee and the Superintendent's Report.
Superintendent's Report, okay. Actually, just trying to pull up one document. Now, a few quick things, the, the list attached is the current list of people who have, who have either been volunteered by the state, like me and Vinnie and, and Tom, uh, and, and others who have volunteered to be on the committee, uh, for the School Building Committee. What I've learned in, in investigating this is generally towns have, uh, cities and towns have bylaws that, that, that basically drive who's on the committee where, neither of our communities have any bylaws. Which gives us a lot more flexibility. The one conversation I'm still waiting to have with the state is the voting member side. Initially, it, in talking to other superintendents, how they decided on who was going to vote was who worked for the town or the community versus who vol, who was volunteering. So if you have like a select board member or a, uh, superintendent, they would be a voting member. If you had a parent volunteering who had a special skill set, they would not be a voting member. So use that structure, but I also had sent a query to, to the MSBA to figure out what the best way to do that is. We are still waiting for a couple of, uh, Wenham Committee members, we, we have, uh, I presented to them two weeks ago, almost three weeks ago now. Rick made the request for their committee, so we're just waiting for them to give us the committees. Everybody else is, uh, uh, is in place. I just got Hamilton this morning, so I didn't want to change the document. So what happens is this gets submitted to the state, and it gets vetted by the state, the state could say, this person's, we don't feel this person's qualified. For example, some of the volunteers, I had to just put what they do, they could say, this person doesn't have the, the necessary qualifications, and then remove that person. Or they could say, you need another FinCom person, or, for example, so, right now, we're gonna, we're just waiting on the, the, um, the Wenham FinCom and the, uh, Wenham Select Board Member to, to be part of the committee. And then we'll forward this to the state, we don't need a vote on it or anything, it's just a matter of, uh, I want it to just be public with the document and say, here's where we are so far. This document will change over, you know, if we get accepted in this process over the three to four or five years, people are going to come and go, and people are going to be like, I can't do this anymore, I can't fit it in, whatever. So it'll change, and each time it does, we have to get, send it to the state and get, get it approved. So I'll just manage that as it, as it goes. First meetings will probably, probably begin with the, the start of the next school year. August, September would probably be the first kickoff meeting of the group, and really just to clarify what we do, why we do it. And then, um, and then the, uh, the, the first part of the process will be October, with two special town meetings that we have scheduled for October first, to really get the whole process moving, so.
Okay, all right.
I have a question on that.
Questions?
I understand the under, the reason why, you know, many volunteers wouldn't be voting members, but I'm surprised that the principals and the, Rebecca Butler and, and Ms. Goodchild would not be voting members. Is that something, is there any way that we can ask to have our professional staff who actually work in the buildings become?
I, I believe anybody can be a voting member, I just left it as I originally sorted out by talking to local principals, I mean, superintendents. So like Manchester, I was talking to the Manchester superintendent, how they structured theirs versus Swampscut, how they structured theirs was different, who voted and who not, but it was driven by town bylaws or rules. We don't have anything that drives who's who on the committee and who's voting right, so that's why I sent the question to the state, to our contact, to be able to say, what's the best way to sort this out? And I'm gonna, I'm gonna assume they're gonna push it back and say, you guys do what you feel like you want to do, so ultimately, anybody will probably be a, a voting member, but.
I guess I would just encourage, if we have latitude to do that, just optically to look at this. I feel like the fact that the principals and the teachers are oddly not voting members, but other, not that I discredit the FinCom at all, but like, I think if someone in the FinCom has a vote, I feel like this principal should have a vote, I just feel like optically, that's really odd that they don't, and I would encourage us to push back on that to.
The way I learned about the way some of the other cities and towns made their decision was based on who actually had the ability and authority in their role. So realistically, for the district, I would probably be the only one with the authority to, you know, start that whole process of that exclusion. But I, like I said, I, I would just assume, leave it that anybody at the table could vote, but I just need to get clarification on that, and that, that'll be up to the state, really. If they say, yeah, do what you want to do, we have no bylaws, we have nothing that's, that says you have to do this, this, and this, so, I'll just adjust it.
Yeah, and it might be, I mean, you, but I mean, you said something about it, it depends on whether or not you're a municipal employee, but because we're regional, I mean, it might be interesting to see how other regional.
Well, but I would think all teachers are technically municipal, you know, employees, it's, I mean, they're.
Yeah, they just can't bind, they don't have the authority to bind us in any, like, they can't even sign a, a teacher can't sign a contract for like a DJ.
Yeah.
It has to go, it has to go to administrator.
Yeah.
So there's some, I just, there's some nuances there, I just have to work out, but that's, I just wanted people to see the names.
Okay, other questions?
I just have one comment.
Can you put, put the mic so we can, yep.
Just happens to be an even number of voting members, I don't know if that would become an issue at some point.
Yeah, well, I'm not, I'm still not sure I have them all, that's, yeah, it could, it could.
Yeah, you definitely don't want that.
We'll take Vinnie off.
All right, anybody else? Okay, uh, Eric, do you have anything else?
Couple of quick things.
Yep, go ahead.
All right, um, yesterday, we had the, the final gathering of the staff, we had, um, uh, Ice Cream Social up at the high school. So people came together, got together for the kind of that last end of the year thing, made their Sundays. Uh, we were fortunate to get, uh, thirteen different gifts donated, little gifts donated by the friends groups, the various friends groups. Uh, so it made it a little more fun than sitting there listening to me drone on, but, um, we had a, we had a, just, I think, a really quick gathering that people needed to be able to see each other before everybody went their separate ways, and, um, things really went well. But I just want to publicly thank the friends groups, and I, again, publicly thank our staff and faculty for the work they did this year, as, as I said to them, this year was, was, was rough. And, uh, you know, together and the relationships that they have with each other and with their students and with the families, I think that was important to bring everybody through this year, and we're almost there, we keep telling them, three more days, three more days, so. National History Day, I just want to mention, a, a couple of our kids have made it all the way to the national, uh, level. So we have, uh, Social Studies Department announcing Mass Individual Documentary category, tenth grader Ella Tran, she earned a second-place medal with her project, The Boat People Debate Diplomacy During Vietnamese Migration. And then the Group Website category, tenth graders Jacob Hano, David Jung, and Jaden Wang won first place with their medal, uh, the first-place medal with their project, Korean Armistice Agreement, the ceasefire that changed the course of two Koreas. Um, that, so there'll be an award ceremony for them, a national-level award ceremony for them, Saturday, June eighteenth, from three to four-thirty. It'll stream live, and I'll put the link in, in my weekly, so that people can check that out if they want to. And then I need to clarify, uh, an error I made on my Superintendent's Entry Report, the, I, I noted in my report that there was no transition from fifth to sixth grade, that is not correct. There is, there is a transition, we were actually working to expand the transition, so I, I do want to mention that that is, that is my issue to deal with. But, um, our council is go to our elementary schools, our, um, counselors and, and teachers do a move-up day. So the kids will, fifth, fifth grade, they come up to visit the middle school, uh, there's a Rising Sixth Grade Parent Meeting that same night, and then, um, peer leaders work with the kids when they come in, their first, their first few days. We have that sixth grade and ninth grade orientation day, peer leaders work with them. Um, and we're looking to enhance that and, and really expand that, but I, I did blow that one, and, and, um, it's really important, I think, to put that out there publicly, that, that there is a transition, I don't want people to think like, what are they doing? But, so I apologize to, to the people at the middle school for, um, not reporting that correctly, but also wanted to correct the, the error, and I'll correct the final report as well. And that is all.
Okay. It is ten-thirty. I'm, does anyone think that, I'm thinking we could, I could entertain a motion probably, I, unless people are, do you have other things that have to get done?
I move to adjourn at ten-thirty PM. Do I have to say something more official?
No, well, I'm waiting for a second. Second by somebody, I didn't.
Jen.
Jen, all right, is there further discussion?
Well, I just think we would be done with the whole meeting entirely in, like, less than ten minutes, but that's, same. Well, I just think we would be done with the whole meeting entirely in, like, less than ten minutes, but that's just me.
I'm go, I don't, I mean, I don't think that we have, I think we're good. Um, if anybody has a topic for a future meeting, send it to me. Alright, um, okay, uh, do we have any further discussion, we ready to vote? Alright, all is in favor? Alright, and it is unanimous, and we are adjourned.